Okay. Calling to order the Sacramento Unified School District Board Education Meeting. Let's do item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Today, actually, we're going to open up the meeting. And I'll give the honor to Mr. Pritchett.
Thank you, President Rhodes. Today, the Rosemont community had a really tough day with the passing of Mr. Jeremy Predko. Jeremy's been with our district since 2001 in various positions. When arriving at Rosemont High School, he fit right in. Jeremy was known to be the friendly face on campus and always had valuable relationships with students and staff. And many would call him a friend. If you ask anyone who knew Jeremy, they would tell you that he was just a really cool guy. He will be missed tremendously in the Rosemont community, and our condolences go out to his family. With that, I ask that we just take a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Jeremy Predko. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we are going to go to item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent?
Please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Going to item 4.2, Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Mitchell Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communication, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, May 7th at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, May 8th at 12:00 p.m. It will also be webcast at Mitchell14live.saccounty.net and can be reviewed on Mitchell Cable's 14 YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which is located in the back of the room, and please hand them to our communication representatives, along with any handouts you may have prior to the board's conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comments for items that are not on the agenda. If you do have a comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask you to please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent.
Thank you so much. Going to item 4.3, Stellar Student. And we're gonna take you guys to the south side of the city. So, Aleah, Ms. Aleah Johnson, can she come up to the podium? Top it up. Hello, Aleah. So, I'm gonna read summary really quick and then have you say some words and/or anybody who might be with you today to come up and say some words. Parents, if you guys want to stand with your, you can as well. Okay, Ms. Johnson, all right. So, Aleah Johnson is an amazing John D. Sloate Elementary 3rd Grade Scholar who has respect of her principal, teachers, and peers alike. Aleah Johnson was nominated as Class President by her principal, peers, and the Leaders of Tomorrow After-School Program Team. According to Principal Fulllove, Aleah demonstrates leadership qualities that help get things done. Aleah is a very helpful person. She is always willing to help others who need help all the time. Aleah's teachers, Ms. An Nguyen, thinks that Aleah is overall a great student. She treats everyone the same and puts no judgment towards others and is very respectful. Aleah is a good dancer. She is always trying to show the girls in her cheer class how to new dance moves. Aleah Johnson also volunteers to work with the TK in kinder classes during her recess time. Aleah helps after-school team clean up the cafeteria and primary school students eat their supper. Aleah even helps out on peer tutoring during academic support. Aleah Johnson is also a cheerleader. Actually, she's a flyer, and she takes her responsibilities seriously. She helps her peers resolve conflict during school. She sees students sitting alone and goes out of her way to make sure they're doing okay. Today's stellar student with a whole bunch of south-side pride is Aleah Johnson from John D. Sloate. Ms. Johnson, would you like to say anything or Mr. Johnson?
It turned on.
Yes, I got it. Boom. Push it again.
Thank you.
There we go. Is there anything you would like to say as our father?
I'm just a proud father. That's all I can say.
Okay, so, we have something for you, Aleah, and the board is gonna come down and take a little photo with you as well. All right.
You must be incredibly strong to be a flyer. I used to be a cheer coach, I know.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Also, very quickly, Aleah's father, I just want to give him a shout-out because I've known that gentleman since I was at Bret Hart Elementary School, working overseeing after-school programs. And so, to see all the great work he's done and to see the prosperity of his family and his daughter is always beautiful to see, so, big shout-out to you, brother. Okay. Item 5.0, Announcements Taken in Close Session.
Good evening, President Rhodes. There are no announcements this evening.
All right, great. Agenda adoption. So, move. Move, move, we're good. All right, guys. Item 7.0, Public Comment. Do we have any? I, you first and second. Oh, no, yeah. Is anybody, agenda adoption? Everybody okay with that? Christina wanted to, but we didn't change anything. Okay.
I'm just considering a request to move our action items to the top of our list, being as the last action item is at 10:40 this evening, which probably won't be 10:40, which will probably be after 11 o'clock. So, I'm just curious if we are thinking and maybe considering that we need to do that.
So, you want to like to move all action items up and all informational items down?
Yes, sir. 9.8, 9.9, 9.6, 9.3, 9.2, and 9.1.
That, that would put all of our classification awards, champions, and all the stuff with Teacher of the Year to the bottom of our meeting today.
President Rhodes? President Rhodes, can I, please?
Yeah.
My recommendation was actually to move 9.3, 9.4, and 9.5 to the top.
You said 9.3, 9.4, and 9.5 to the top?
Yes, we have staff here, and they've got to get back to their school sites early in the morning.
Question for you. We also, we also have item 9.2, Long American Day Resolution. We have principals and family members of students who are also in this space. Would you want to move that item along with other items to the top before item 8.0?
Yes.
So, was there any consideration for what I was talking about first? I understand that the crowd is having an issue with that, but I did ask us to take consideration, and then it just moved to a different conversation.
I think, I, I... No, no, that's fine, that's fine. I think that we're still on the same conversation piece. We weren't blocking out anybody's general conversation. We're having just a general conversation about those pieces. If you would like, is there a motion outside of our conversation piece? Member Phillips, would you like to motion to move those items forward? And see if you have a second?
Well, at this point, it sounds like the crowd wants to go home, because you guys got babies and work and all that other kind of stuff, we understand. I was just considering this, because we are limited in board members this evening, and a couple of us are having some health concerns this evening, and we want to be here to make sure that we're moving the action items. However, with that said, I'm gonna pull back my consideration, and y'all can do what you need to do.
Okay. Member Pritchett, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we move 9.3, 9.4, and 9.5 ahead of 8.0.
9.3, 9.4, 9.5?
That's correct.
I would, can I do a friendly amendment to your motion to also move 9.2 up as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so then, I'm talking 9.2 going and then 9.3 for five?
Yes.
Ahead of item 8.0?
That is correct.
Okay, that's a motion, a second.
Please restate.
Okay, so, the restate of the motion is we would like to move item 9.2, 9.3, 9.4, 9.5 in front of item 8.0 to respect the families and employees in the crowd. We had a first and second. Is there? From the board, are, can we do a, we have to do a roll call board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
I don't disagree.
All abstain?
I will let.
Okay. That means we have all, did you, did you vote members abstain? Okay. Okay, you said aye, just want to make sure, just make sure. So, all board members are present and one abstention. Okay, motion passes, and we will move on right now to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We do, President Rhodes. We have approximately 16 speakers signed up, total.
Okay.
Let's begin with Carla Fawcett, followed by Deborah Durazo, and then Esther Gonzalez.
Good evening, board members. I am here to thank you for the hard work that you did for our bus drivers. We made an agreement with the district over a year ago, and it took a year to get to where we were trying to do this emergency need for the district. And after talking with board members repeatedly, having one-on-ones, and several hard conversations, the district finally came through, and I want to tell you, you guys have made a huge difference for the workers in the bus yard that can actually make a living today, and they're not living at poverty level. So, for making those drastic and healthy changes, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for helping my people. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Aguilar and board members. First, I'd like to say, may the fourth be with you. And also, thank you, again, being part of the bargaining team this last year has been difficult, making sure that as a, as a leader on SEIU's chapter team, hearing everyone's concerns, whether it's financial, whether it's work hours, everything as well, it's just been a tough year. And hopefully, moving forward, thank you all, as Carla said, for working on our behalf, on our members' behalf, to ensure that our bus drivers have reached this agreement, our transportation department, so that they can have an increase. So, now here, my plea to all of you is now let's get our instructional aides on that list. They are one of the lowest-paid demographics of our employees. They work tirelessly, and there's different departments, so, in that, in that group as well, and our nutrition service workers. So, please, if we can move just a little faster so that we can get, one, our class and comp study finished and completed before the end of the school year, and also our re-opener. So, those are two things that I'm putting on your plate so that we can, again, move just a little quicker, and it doesn't take as long as our transportation department and OU has taken. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Hello. I just said hello.
Good evening. I'm here to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to, I have the names here, Daniel Chayak, Rob Rowe, Deborah Durazo, Jim Raffo, Mari Ortiz, Cassandra Wills, Olivia Vanessa Mayner, David Wong, Benny Martinez, Omi Monti, Christina Facio, and Supervisor Harry Subramyan. I want to say thank you. I work for Transportation, and I've been there already for 27 years. And now, I feel so happy that all my coworkers were going to get paid a little more. And I want to say thank you for all your hard work. And this, for me, is a big thing, because now we can recruit more bus drivers that we need them. Also, I'm so happy, I cannot even, so excited, because I love my job. You have to have a heart to love this job and to be a bus driver and to be a teacher, to be anything for our community and for our future, our kids. And thank you, thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart. And my name is Esther Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Next speakers?
Next group of speakers, Olivia Mayner, followed by Karen Brown and Angie Spagner.
Hello, Ms. Mayner.
Good afternoon, board members. About three months ago, I was in front of you guys, asking you to please give me the tools to help my job, to be able to do it effectively. You guys have heard and you guys have listened. Now, we can actually start serving our community better. Our drivers, most of our drivers have been there a long time. Thirty-three of them have been there more than 20 years. So, a lot of them are actually telling me they can finally put a stop to their second job. I have a member of our bus driver, she's been there for 30 years. She was making bare minimum, pretty much, and now she's able to provide for her family. She's a single mother. I have another of our bus drivers, Ms. Cassandra. She's the sole provider for her house. Her husband is terminally ill. She has to go and do another job right after she gets off. Thankful to this raise, now she can actually stop that second job and be home. Instead of being home at 8:00 and 9:00, she can actually be there and have a life and provide for her family. So, I greatly appreciate what you guys did. I know it took a lot. I really sincerely, these bus drivers deserved it, and our community and our children deserved getting picked up. Now, we just got to work in recruiting bus drivers and bringing them back to our community and make Sac City the destination to work at. So, thank you very much, Mr. Shenore Rhodes. Gracias por hablar en español to our Bowling Green community that showed up last week. I greatly appreciate it. You didn't have to, but you did, and I greatly appreciate that you communicated with these families in their language. That made a difference for me. Mr. Josji, thank you for participating in that last meeting that we had. That really meant a lot for us. So, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. We have a lot of progress to do within our transportation department, and so do you guys. So, thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Mayner. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, I got it.
Good evening. I wasn't prepared to speak. I was kind of put on the spot, but I do want to make it publicly known that I'm very grateful. I've worked for Transportation for five years, and I hear some of the stories that the employees have been there for years and years, so I feel grateful. I appreciate your time, your effort, and once again, thank you. Thanks.
Hello. I believe, do we dance at a place together? Okay.
So, I'm the shy one. I'm Angelia Spagner. I'm one of the single parents with the five kids, and I've been here for 32 years, so I want to say thank you guys so much. It means so much to us, you just don't even know. So, thank you guys for working so hard and considering us and everything, and I don't talk that much. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next group of speakers, Celia Ortiz and Frank DeYoung.
Hello, Ms. Ortiz. Hello.
Hi, good evening. I've been with Transportation for 23 years, and I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate what you did for us. And I love my job. When I first started, my kids were little in elementary school, and now I get to see my grandkids at Caroline Wenzel every morning, because I drive that bus. And I just, I'm just so appreciative and thankful, so God bless you guys. Thank you.
Brother Frank?
Hey.
How are you doing?
Good evening, President Rhodes and Superintendent Aguilar and fellow board members. Forgive my voice, I was out at a track meet all day yesterday. The weather doesn't like me. I'm really here to challenge the board tonight. I'm sorry, I'm not going to talk about Transportation. I apologize. You need to do your homework. You need to understand, ask yourself these questions. Are our children better off than they were a year ago? The answer is no. If you look at the numbers, they don't lie. Are they better than they were two years ago? No. Are they going to get better next year? Doubtful. We need to start talking about our children. We need to start thinking about what they need. Because our low-income children of color, they need a lot of help, and by the numbers, they're not getting it. And we can say a whole lot, but I'm going to tell you one thing. Until we stop pointing fingers at each other and start sitting at a table and talking about solutions, we're not going to fix anything. There is no one group in this district that knows everything. If they tell you they do, anybody that says they're the expert, they're usually not. Why do you get a second opinion when you go to a doctor? It's no different. We need to listen to everybody, the community, the teachers, the principals, the staff. You know, it's, it's really sad where we are right now. I look at the numbers when I'm doing my LCAP work, and you just shake your head, and you're asking yourself, how can this be? How can children of color only be at 19% of grade level, but we're graduating them over 70-something percent? How do you justify that? How could they possibly have secondary options to them in that state? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Seven speakers have given their time to Richard Owen, so he is recognized for up to 16 minutes.
Hello, Brother Rich.
I won't take 16, so smile. Board President Rhodes, fellow board members, Superintendent Aguilar, I'm Richard Owen, Executive Director of UPE. As you know, UPE seldom comes before this board to share our concerns, because we fervently believe that we have an obligation to work first closely with the district administration to present our ideas and perspectives, and to work together to solve many, many complicated issues. If by chance, when we have exhausted that approach without any significant progress, which is rare, we bring our concerns directly to you, the school board. Tonight, we are reaching out and urging you to truly listen to our concerns. We have been actively monitoring your school board meetings, and we felt compelled, and we believe that it's our moral imperative to speak on what we have observed from this board. To be perfectly transparent and honest, the last string of board meetings have been embarrassing and demoralizing to many who observe these meetings. No disrespect to any individual board member here, but this board needs to be more coherent and more precise about the role of the school board, and to give attention and consideration to research on what constitutes a high-performing school board. We believe that all of you are quality individuals and have great intentions, and that's why you ran for the school board. However, as a collective board, we believe there is a need for a reset. Therefore, please allow me, in a few moments, to talk about that research that I just referenced. But before I speak on that research, I want to share what we have observed thus far from this board that is very concerning to UPE. First, this board needs to understand that there are five collective bargaining units in this district, and the voices of each one should be weighed equally when making decisions. We have the utmost respect for our fellow bargaining units, and their perspectives matter and must be heard, must be understood, and acted upon when possible. Additionally, we share their desire for there to be significant increase in compensation for all bargaining units. When a correctional officer with a high school diploma makes more than a beginning teacher, something is really wrong with our priorities. When many of our classified colleagues, which I'm glad to hear what you did for the transportation department, are making slightly more than the minimum wage, that too is embarrassing and unacceptable. We need everyone to be made whole if we expect success. UPE members are your school and district leaders and have a unique perspective and vantage point regarding how to make this district thrive in this complicated ecosystem called public education. We are the bridge between the superintendent, faculty, staff, students, and community. We have the awesome challenge of interpreting and having fidelity to implementing the board's policies and vision. We do that every day, realizing that that is our calling. And with that in mind, we need the board to understand that your words and your behavior really matter. When we participate and watch a board meeting and witness dysfunction attacks and unprofessional behavior, you need to know that it reverberates throughout the district, making it extremely difficult for your leaders to be effective in that environment. Moreover, please know and understand that the broader community is watching and commenting as well. People frequently ask, how in the world do you work in Sac City School District with all that dysfunction? So, what you are projecting makes it very difficult to recruit and retain high-quality employees. In fact, many are seeking employment elsewhere so they can experience education in a more positive atmosphere. We want you to know that you cannot aspire to hold everyone accountable, including the superintendent, and your principals, and everyone else in this district, while at the same time failing for us. This happens when the governance model spirals out of control, and you begin to assume the role of the superintendent and overall district administration. That is unacceptable to us. That is not a board's role. When those lines are blurred, everyone suffers, especially the children we are sworn to serve. Hold everyone accountable, but stay out of the management of the district, the operations side of the house. We need you to help us improve systems throughout the organization, which we've shared with some of you board members that we've met with. We cannot move forward confidently if it is perceived that this board is inclined to play favorites, or put another way, only dance with those who brought you to the dance. If this is true, it will only height tensions and cause ongoing conflict between various constituencies within the district. As previously mentioned, there is considerable research on what constitutes a high-performing school board. We offer this not to lecture you, but to urge you to live in this lane so that we can be successful each and every day. Some of that excellent research comes from one of the organizations you are considering on tonight's agenda, Great City Schools. I am personally aware of their work and history, and I want to offer my strongest possible recommendation with that. Some of what I am sharing was also gleaned from my work with the Stanford University School Design Network and the Gates Foundation, where I worked with school districts throughout the nation. The following are some of the key areas we wish to highlight for you. Number one, effective school boards provide strategic rather than operational support. Number one, effective school boards provide strategic rather than operational support. Great boards know the difference between strategy and operations and they stay in that particular lane. They focus on policy areas and delegate authority to the superintendent to ensure smooth operations. Effective school boards understand their role and responsibilities. They know they are there as directors rather than an executive team. There is a clear understanding of the authority that lies with the executive branch and the legal and operational parameters of the school board. Effective high-performing boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement. You just heard a gentleman speak to that and I totally agree with those comments. Effective school boards are accountability-driven and they spend less time on operational issues and focus more on policies to improve student achievements. They lead, but they don't manage. Effective school boards are data-savvy. They embrace monitoring and use data to drive continuous improvement in the district. They also lead us as a united team with the superintendent developing trust and collaboration throughout the system, which reverberates down through the system so all of us can begin to operate in that way, from your example. Effective boards commit to their ongoing learning development as individuals and as a team. An effective school board has a code of ethics that requires strict adherence. This can ensure that the board members know what is expected of them. Additionally, great boards carry out a self-assessment review annually with external facilitation, which helps remind everyone of their role and reflect on what is and what isn't working. If all parties conduct a checkup from the neck up and strive to perfect their essential role, living in that space, we will rise together. UPE stands ready to do just that. We stand ready to be intentional, professional and engaged partners with you and everybody else within the district. We are skilled and highly trained professionals with years of experience and this is what we need from this board in order for us to improve student achievement. We need stability and leadership. We need continuity of care. We in less infighting and chaos. We need assurances that personal, political or reelection concerns are not what's driving this district. We can only be successful if you're holding your end of the bargain and you set the example for the rest of us. Lastly, UPE needs everyone within the sound of my voice tonight to understand that what we witnessed at last board meeting with one of our colleagues was absolutely unacceptable. It felt like a public verbal lynching to us. This should not be the venue to demonize, insult and drag through the mud any employee in this district. We will not stand idly by going forward. While our members are vilified and attacked in an inhumane and degrading manner, there are venues for dealing with those matters. We intend to stand up to all forms of bullying, no matter where it comes from, and this board should have that view as well. We thank you for hearing us out this evening and we appreciate you and really pray for your continued success. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay. Seeing that we have no more speakers, we're going to go to item 9.2 on the agenda, which is a Mong American Day resolution being presented by our principal at Susan B. Anthony.
All right. Good evening, President Rhodes, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar and school district staff. My name is Bo Muah and I'm the proud principal of Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. Susan B. Anthony is home to the first Mong immersion program on the West Coast. Mong students are also the second-largest language group in Sacramento City Unified School District. I'm here with our students, parents, staff and community members this evening to present to you for approval the Mong American Day Resolution number 3318. This resolution is a resolution to recognize May 14 as Mong American Day in the Sacramento City Unified School District. Before I read the resolution for approval, I would like to thank President Rhodes for this opportunity to present this very important resolution this evening to the board. I will now read the resolution in its entirety. Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, Mong American Day Resolution 3318. Whereas, May 14, 2023 marks the 48th anniversary of the fall of Longchang, a United States Mong airbase in Laos during the Lao Ching Civil War, where the Mong allied with the United States fought together in Laos against the North Vietnamese, also known as the Secret War from 1961 to 1975. And whereas approximately 30,000 to 40,000 Mong soldiers were killed during the Secret War, that included many Mong soldiers who were under 18 years old. The United States helped Mong refugees flee to Thailand on May 14, 1975 and more than 100,000 Mong refugees to come to the United States starting in December 1975. And whereas, May 14 Mong American Day is a time to remember and honor Mong people's history, stories and contributions in the Vietnam War. May 14, 1975 was the last airlift evacuation of Mong soldiers and families from Laos to a refugee camp in Thailand. And whereas, many Mong refugees and their families immigrated to the United States and today, over 40,000 of the more than 325,000 Mong Americans are residents of Sacramento County. And whereas, like many immigrant groups, before them, Mong refugees resettled to the United States to escape war and persecution, to find opportunities and to better their lives and the lives of their children. And whereas, Mong Americans are helping build a vibrant and diverse California, contributing socially, politically and economically to our state. Many of the Mong have become America's success stories from having nothing to becoming educators, engineers, nurses, doctors, lawyers, professional athletes, firefighters, soldiers, elected officials and more. Today recognizes and celebrates the history, culture and contributions of Mong Americans in California. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education do hereby recognize May 14, 2023 as Mong American Day.
Beautiful, beautiful. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have three speakers, Sao Vu followed by Charity Vang and then Mae Va Vang.
Hello, my name is Sao Vu. Before I begin, I would like to take a few moments of silence to honor my fellow Mong people who have lost their lives during the Vietnam War. Good evening, Board President Rhodes, Superintendent Aguilar and members of the board. I am a Mong immersion kindergarten teacher at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. I have been teaching for the last 25 years in Sac City Unified District. We are proud to be the first Mong dual-language immersion program in the West Coast. And thanks to your leadership for embracing diversity and for putting our kids first in order for us to have this opportunity. I'm here tonight along with my many Mong parents, students and educators to support the Mong American Resolution 3318. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Mong parents and students who are here tonight. So if you're Mong parents and students, please stand up. We have so many people waiting outside, so thank you.
The people outside, you should have them come in.
Now you may sit. It has been long overdue that we recognize and honor my fellow Mong people who fought courageously with our American allies during the Secret War, a war which was funded by the CIA to fight and protect democracy, peace and freedom in Southeast Asia. Without the many sacrifices of my people, I will not have the opportunity to be where I am today. I'm forever grateful for their bravery, loyalty and sacrifices so that many of us can live a better life now.
Thank you so much. Go ahead. No, you can say your last words.
Thank you.
For speakers coming up, please remember, you have two minutes on the docket. Sorry for interrupting you, definitely didn't want to.
Next speaker is Charity Vang followed by Mae Va Vang.
Hello. Floor is yours.
Good evening, President Rhodes, member of the boards, Superintendent Aguilar and school district staff. My name is Charity Vang and I am a sixth-grade Mong immersion student. I am a student council president at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. I am a proud Mong American. I have learned so much about my own history and identity by being in the Mong American program at Susan B. Anthony. I am here in support of making May 14, 2023 Mong American Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Mae Va Vang.
Mae Va? She's not here? Okay. Okay, seeing if, no, she's not here? Okay, she's not outside in the corner? Okay. Seeing that there's no one else here, we're going to turn it over for any of my colleagues if they have anything. Member Pritchett.
President Rhodes, I'd like to move Resolution 3318.
Thank you. We have Member Phillips. Member Phillips, yeah.
Thank you. I am in support of the Mong American Day Resolution. I've worked with a great many Mong people in my life and even though I do not know how to speak Mong, it was very important for me to learn at one time in my life how to say I don't know how to speak Mong in order to be respectful. So, you know, I still remember, it's been 30 years, but you can correct me, but it's gucci pau hai lo Mong. And it made sense because I worked at an answering service where a lot of our clientele were Mong speakers and it was important for me to understand that I didn't want them to feel left out. So even though I had to go get Mae Va to hang me later, to help me later, that was how I helped our customers. So I appreciate this immersion program. I'm really jazzed. So we have it at Luther?
No, so we have it at Susan B. Anthony. Luther Burbank does have a Mong course that's highly intensive. Our gap really is in the middle school areas, like a lot of our other dual-immersion programs.
Okay, on my list. Thank you.
Member Singh.
Thank you. I also just want to echo my strong support and kind of speak about the fact that I was a foreign language teacher and, you know, our communities, for example, the Sac community, the Punjabi-speaking community, we settled in the Central Valley, similar to the Mong community. And when I was a teacher in Fresno, I taught. I taught at a high school where I got to teach Punjabi as a foreign language and I got to help students who were trying to understand the language, learn the language. So I absolutely personally understand the power of having immersion programs and I also absolutely understand the importance of knowing your history and being able to talk about your history. And so many times, we put the onus on immigrant children to have to discuss that and teach us, but that's kind of the thing, you know, as teachers, we teach, but oftentimes, our students teach us the most. So I'm very appreciative of the efforts that the community puts in to inform us, to educate us and just so happy that you're all here and so happy to support this. So thank you so much.
Beautiful. Thank you guys so much. Any other board members have anything? No? All right. Thank you, Susan B. Anthony and all of the families and community that's here today to support this. Long overdue. I think this is the first time in our district that we've held a resolution representing a community that has been with us for so long and is a huge part of our day-to-day lives. I grew up in the south side of the city and growing up in the south side of the city, if somebody asks you right now, what's the difference between green and white? We learned that growing up in South Sacramento. You already know, right? And so the Mong community is ingrained. Some of my greatest friends growing up were from Mong community and so I appreciate all the work that's being done. Please invite me to any place that has Mong sausage or sticky rice. I am there quickly, but just to give it better, give honor to what you guys do for our communities is huge. Also, I still need to go to school, so I'll be joining kindergarten class one of these days in the Mong immersion class to get there. And so any of my colleagues who would love to come and join a kindergarten class with me, I think it'll be well worth the time to learn a little bit more Mong here on this board. With that being said, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A second, Superintendent?
Out student preferential.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all board members who are present. Congratulations. We have something for you guys as well. We would like to present this to principal and then everybody who's in the audience from the community, could you guys please come down as well along? So everybody on the side of the wall, whoever you guys have in the back, come on down. Board members? Come in, come in, because I... Okay. Come in, come in the front or something. Can we get some of the department?
Look at the little ones.
You guys can come on down to the bottom? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I say something really quick? Okay. All right. Just a really quick, just really quick, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Mong community, our students, parents, staff, community members who are present... community, our students, parents, staff, community members who are present this evening, and I thank you for approving this extremely special day to recognize the Hmong American students and their families in this school district. Before we leave, I would like to leave the board and district staff with a gift of a book on Hmong history written by our very own author, who is also a second-grade teacher at Susan B. Anthony, C. Lor. Okay? So thank you. Have a wonderful evening, and we'll come around and give you each a book.
While they pass around a wonderful book, we're going to bring up item 9.3 by Dr. McCarron.
Actually, President Rhodes and board members, this is going to be presented by our HR team. We have David Van Atten, Christina Vegas, Piki Trujillo, and Jesus Galvin, who work as HR directors and recruitment and retention specialists to share this information with you. Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons couldn't be with us tonight, but we want to recognize all of her hard work in this recognition as well.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is David Van Atten, Human Resources Director, and I'm here with my colleague Christina Vegas, also a Human Resources Director. During what can only be described as challenging times, it is important that we recognize all of our district's hard-working employees. This certainly includes our principals. They serve an essential role by supporting students, families, faculty, staff, and the diverse communities that make up our district. It is with honor that we recognize all principals in the Sacramento City Unified School District with Resolution Number 3316. Whereas May 1st, 2023, has been designated as School Principals' Day, and whereas today's school principal is a team leader, coach, counselor, collaborator, cheerleader, and more, all-in-one, and whereas being a site instructional leader and building a positive school culture and climate on campus may be the most critical role of a principal's duty to all students, and whereas instructional leadership of principals involves setting clear goals, managing curriculum, monitoring lesson plans, allocating resources equitably, and evaluating data regularly to drive grade-level readiness, and whereas when good school leaders excel, their actions can change the lives of students, staff, and community members, and whereas principals overcome obstacles and challenges daily to make a difference in the lives of students and families, and whereas we are fortunate to have dedicated site leaders that go above and beyond each and every day for the district's students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education commends our principals and encourages parents and the community to recognize the efforts of principals as we celebrated May 1st, 2023. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Board comment? Member Pritchett?
Thank you, President Rhodes. I just want to take a moment and thank all of our administrators throughout the district for your selfless courage that you have and the love that you have for each one of our sites, all of our students. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the hard work that you do.
Thank you. Member Singh.
Before I say all the nice stuff, I just want to mention on paragraph five, we need to do a quick change from, spell there correctly. It's T-H-E-Y apostrophe R-E to make it T-H-E-I-R, not to call that out.
I'm ahead of you as a former English teacher.
Yes. I don't want to get yelled at by a principal afterwards, so. I also want to just thank all the principals and administrators, and I really want to say that it is relationship, so I have had the pleasure of building some of these relationships in the past couple of months with some of the principals in my trusty area, so I'm just looking forward to building those relationships. I guess I can call them out by names, the ones that come to the top of my head, but I've had the pleasure of working with Principal Bennett over at Tahoe Elementary. I know, let's see, Principal Dixon, if I don't name someone, please don't get mad at me, just means we have to meet more. Principal Kirkland, I see you, so I can call you right here, so I know we're meeting soon. But I just really want to thank the folks that have put in that effort, and it's a collaborative effort to get to know one another and work together. So I'm just really glad that we're doing this and looking forward to building more, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Phillips.
A big thank you again for bringing forward this resolution. I just want to make sure that we also, as a district and as a school board, are fully in support of our principals and admin staff so that they can do their jobs appropriately on-site. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing there's no one else in the queue. So there's a second moving, but before that, I just want to say thank you. As a student, a product of this district, principals and teachers' roles and school site staff roles in my life were where I spent most of my time at, from morning till 6 o'clock in the evening. You guys were the cornerstone when I wasn't at home, and you are that way for thousands of children still today. So for all the work that you guys do, thank you. And we have a motion. We have a second. Student preferential.
Aye.
All right. Superintendent? Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all members that are present. Thank you. Are you guys here for the 9.4 as well? Beautiful. Welcome back.
Thank you.
As Dr. McCarron said at the beginning, this was originally, it was supposed to be Dr. Simmons who would be up here. She was not able to be with us this evening. I was the best stand-in that Consey could find on short notice, so here we are. Good evening, Superintendent and board members. It is with great honor that I come before you tonight to present our 2023-24 Classified Champions of the Year and our Teachers of the Year. We are grateful for all of our employees and are excited to recognize our exceptional employees tonight. This year, we had 70 submissions for Classified Champion, and tonight we are recognizing 58 And I was told this is when the slideshow would play.
Is there music to the slideshow?
It's going quickly, naming everyone that's on there.
No, no problem. I was just wondering.
Classified champions that are being nominated, and we have their awards here. So after the slideshow, we're going to be naming their names so they can come up and get their award.
Beautiful.
your award and your certificate. First is Alina Azakal. Angela French. April Larios. Danny Richards. Derek Lobatsky. Debbie Aldama. Elaine Sepeda. Kelsey Amuck. Kirsty Hasselbaker. Marla Lobatsky. Robin Garcia. Suzie Holquin. Sylvia Rincon. Teresa Lopez. Tia Andrade. Valerie Levine. Yolanda Markulescu. And if there's anyone that didn't hear their name, call, please let me know, and we will give you your certificate and award. April. It should be in here? Or on the other side? Is that it? No, it's in here. Tracy Piker? Tracy? I think I saw yours. Let's see. I thought... No, but we have your award up here. Yeah, we have your award up. Another big round of applause for all of our awards and nominees. Thank you so much. Can we get a picture?
Yes, we're going to have the board come down with superintendent as well, take a
For Classified Champions, if you can go into the bistro to take your picture, there's refreshments there for you, too. Yeah, hold on, just a second. Hi, I'm doing an impromptu public comment. I did turn in a card, and we do have refreshments, but I'm serving them, so I got to do the public comment and then I'll run through refreshments. But my public comment today is for my Classified Champions. We had 10 nominees. Three of them made it here tonight. I want to thank you for recognizing our Classified Champions this month. It turns out that this is also National School Lunch Hero Week. Lots of comments out there. A few of our school lunch heroes are here today, and I have many more that did not receive...
Really quickly, do you want to wait till, so that people can actually hear what you're saying?
You don't think they can hear me?
No, they can't.
We have refreshments in about five minutes. Can they hear me now?
Either they can't hear you or they're not paying attention. I was going to...
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get started.
Here's what I do.
Okay. Thank you for recognizing our Classified Champions.
Excuse me, everybody that's walking out, can you please exit? They just turned me off? Wow. Yeah, we're off. Okay, if you guys can please exit out so we can continue the meeting, I appreciate you guys' excitement. There's refreshments outside, they're not in here, they're out there, so please go to the refreshments. Thank you so much, and we appreciate you. You can try again now.
Okay, I'm going to try again. I'm Diana Flores, I'm the Director of Nutrition Services. I'm excited that 10 of my employees were nominated for Classified Champion today. Three of them were here tonight. It turns out, this is all... It turns out this is also National School Lunch Hero Week, so I have a little message for my champions. Superheroes are ones that give of themselves for the betterment of others. It's a well-known fact that capes are just aprons worn backwards. Every day, your apron signifies the commitment to be the hero in the life of a kid that needs one. You may never know who needs you in that moment, so you are a hero to all of them. May you always remember the difference you make, but especially this week, as we celebrate Classified Champion Award. Thank you to my heroes, to April, Stephanie, and Katie that are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Go and enjoy those refreshments, everyone. Item 9.5. Welcome back.
We are also here tonight to recognize our Teachers of the Year. This year, we had 300 submissions. We followed the guidelines of the county office, and one criteria is that you must have taught for at least seven years. Once we determined who met that criteria, 155 teachers were invited to submit applications. Forty did so. And the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee interviewed 17, and seven were selected for observations. This year, we were pleased with the diversity of the nominations and the applications. We were able to visit school librarians, high school teachers, special education teachers, as well as elementary teachers. We have asked our current Teacher of the Year, Dr. Lawson, to share a few words about her experience as a committee member and current teacher of the year.
I did not know that I was going to be called up here, so let me find what I wrote now that I'm all nervous.
No need to be nervous, you're among friends.
But you're not 10. It's really easy when you're 10. Real easy when you're 10. Okay. I'm almost there, I promise. Almost. Okay, found it. When I was selected to be one of the district's Teachers of the Year, I was extremely honored. The celebrations, the events, and so much more were exciting. However, I have to admit that the most exciting part of this year is when I joined the selection committee, and I got to help pick our next Teachers of the Year. From reading essays about teacher philosophy to heartfelt interviews and concluding with inspiring classroom observations, this was exciting. Something I never imagined happened. I was able to read about, interview, and observe teachers who I look to as mentors in teaching and beyond. To select a name-- am I supposed to tell you who they are? --these two teachers was the most extraordinary part of my educational career. Am I supposed to tell you who they are? No? Okay, so Teacher 1. I worked alongside this first teacher when I was a novice teacher. She inspired me with her beautiful smile, warm but firm communication, her love of the kids that she worked with. This teacher is the most phenomenal teacher who takes it upon herself to provide experiences for her scholars to support their skills, knowledge, intellect, and joy. I wish all of our students in Sac City could experience time with her. She's the reason many of her scholars will succeed and thrive after leaving her school. Her students and colleagues are fortunate to see her and feel the spirit that flows from her. I watched her teach a lesson on historically black colleges and universities. It was magical. If every child of color could have a teacher who represents and fights for them, the world would be better, and wellness would explode in our communities. Let me tell you who it is now. Mrs. Bry Jones. Oh no, now I lost it. Okay, found it again. This next teacher, many years later and currently, I came to work alongside her. Her knowledge and expertise with social and emotional learning is extraordinary. She uses laughter and love to promote wellness in her class. If a student needs anything, supplies for a 6th grade trip, clean clothes, a snack, or just a chance to practice some leadership, she creates the space in an already often-filled-up schedule. This teacher loves her students as she loves her own child. She's the type of teacher who collects funds and purchases medical devices for students and ensures everyone on campus is celebrated. She's never afraid to have hard conversations with her students about race, equity, gender, and so much more. Although she is a 6th grade teacher, everyone knows where to go when they need a hug or a laugh. One of her students came into my room this week and shared a story with me. She said she attended a workshop at her synagogue where they discuss trauma and responding to those who have trauma. This student said to me, "Everything they said people should do to support those with trauma, my teacher does." So thank you, Sac City, for allowing me to announce Mrs. Quinn.
Yes, that's, yes, yes. Please come and say a few words.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Board, President Rhodes. I just want to thank the committee for this opportunity. I have been a teacher, this is my 28th year. I teach 5th grade at Parkway. My mom passed a few months ago. My mom never really said how proud she was of me, but she's saying it now, loud and clear. I heard her say that when an email came across that I was nominated. I said, "No, I don't want to go through that." But in my dreams, she said, "Yes. I'll lead you the whole way." And she did. So because she never said it, when she was here on this earth, she sang it in heaven. And because of that, I will continue to push for my scholars. I went to elementary school in Sac City, middle school, high school, Sacramento State. My first job was at Parkway, teaching 6th grade in 1994. I have the best job. I want to give my scholars every opportunity I didn't have. That's my passion. Things I didn't have, I want them to have. I didn't get to go to Sac State and even know if there was a university or college until I was in 11th grade. And when I became a teacher, I said, "My scholars, I don't care if they're in kindergarten, they're going to Sac State. They won't walk away from high school saying they never visited a college or university." I push hard because of them. I thank God for strength. I thank my husband, my scholars who are here, and their parents. Ms. Jackie and the entire community. I thank everyone. So, and I thank you all for believing me, to stand here and to be honored tonight. Bless you all.
I will attempt to be as well-spoken and beautifully said. I will throw in a lot of ums, too, because I seem to be really nervous. I want to thank everybody who made this possible. Also, having quite a few years behind me in teaching, it's a really humble place to be, standing in this spot, because, like, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the colleagues that I have, the people that I've learned from, all the times I have fallen down and failed as a teacher, and have the security of knowing that I have a team who loves me and supports me and will pick me back up when I mess up, and who will allow me to learn from them and in turn allow me to teach them what I know, and students who are forgiving and kind and funny, and allow me to mess up and learn with me when we do mess up in the classroom, and just have that really beautiful reciprocal nature of learning, which is what I'm lucky to have in my colleagues and what I'm lucky to have in my students. And I'm really honored that my students got to see that. They got to see that process. They got to see that they were a pivotal part in me being who I am right now. And they got to share that with me, and it's beautiful. And I don't know what else to say other than, like I said, I'm very honored to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to our Teachers of the Year. And Board, we would invite you down for pictures and just-- yes, for sure, yes, pictures, and to congratulate our teachers.
Next, we're going to move to item 8.0. Employee Organization Reports, SCTA. For everybody celebrating, please save me a slice of cake and some of the good vibes. Fruit cups, I'm sorry. I have to follow a wellness policy. There's no cake here, guys. Just fruit cups.
Fruit cups? Is that what there is? Okay. Save me some fruit cups.
Exactly.
Good evening. I'm David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association. Oh, I can wait, I guess. But they all want to celebrate.
Mr. Fisher, if you would like to, you can go ahead, or--
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I'll try to speak up, and I don't mind the excitement of the day. I just want to say congratulations to the teachers. You know, a couple connections. My daughter went to Washington when they reopened in 6th grade and was in her-- the teacher-- as part of the 6th grade team. That's very exciting. And of course, Ms. Bry Jones is one of our Board members at SCTA, and very proud to say she's one of our elementary directors. So it's very exciting. Let's see. At last week's meeting, supermajority of this board did take a significant step to show the importance of using the district's resources that they received today on today's students to improve outcomes today. They did that by rescinding the Key Elements of Board Policy 3100, which placed a higher priority on hoarding the district's resources rather than spending it on today's students. To that supermajority, we greatly appreciate your leadership on this important issue. Following up on the strong positive change in the district's budget policy direction through the revisions of Board Policy 3100, we were looking forward to constructive discussion about the district's budget, particularly when we saw item 9.7 on tonight's agenda, Budget Investments Update. Unfortunately, as of this afternoon, when I was writing this, even though the presentation is scheduled for at least 30 minutes with a follow-up conversation of 45 minutes, district staff had shared no information regarding its, quote, "budget investment update." The background rationale description consists of two sentences. Quote, "In June 2023, the district-- the Board will take action to adopt the 2324 district budget. The district will present proposed investments," end quote. So how is that really fair to you as the Board, or any of the stakeholders, or for the general public, for that matter, to be expected to come prepared to engage in a meaningful discussion about the district's budget when the superintendent has failed to provide any information prior to this meeting until we walked in on the back? You may have noticed that the superintendent often talks a lot about being committed to transparency. Of course, that's a good thing. Unfortunately, especially when it comes to budgeting, his actions do speak for themselves. You've heard this before, but it's important to repeat. The district has been stunningly inaccurate in its budget projections. In our comprehensive presentation to you back in January of 2023, we noted that despite repeated claims from both the superintendent and Dave Gordon from the Sacramento County Office of Education, that in contrast to San Juan and Elk Grove, Sac City is the only district that has run a surplus every year since the Sac City budget was rejected in August of 2018. We also showed that Sac City's budget projections were 2.5 to 4x more inaccurate than Elk Grove's and San Juan's. In every instance, Sac City significantly underpredicted its surplus. And at least in one case, the district's projections were off by more than $95 million. In short, there are few things more reliable than the unreliability of the Sac City's budget projections. And Dave Gordon and Sacramento County Office of Education have not helped, to say the least. How many times have you heard Gordon or Nick Schweitzer speak of the district's, quote, "history of deficit spending," end quote? In reality, no such history exists. The district has run surpluses in 12 of the last 13 years. And let's not forget Mr. Gordon's recent letter of April 18, 2022, following the strike where he revised the district's budget certification to negative, and wrote that, quote, "The agreements and the penalties will result in a $16.1 million structural deficit and reduce the district's unrestricted general fund balance to $27.8 million in 2324," end quote. Notice that was not at all nuanced. It was a statement that it will happen. Well, that statement, of course, was false. As we saw in recent numbers from the district, Sac City currently has a $104.2 million unrestricted general fund balance and expects to have a $130 million unrestricted fund balance in 2324. Example after example of embarrassingly wronged higher predictions still doesn't seem to prevent Mr. Gordon from continually to write politically motivated communications falsely predicting the financial apocalypse of Sac City. How can someone be so wrong for so long? We look forward to the day when Sac City can say so long to SCOWI's so-called oversight.
district to respond when I put a request in for information. I finally gave up trying to just do back and forth emails and so I've got a database created now because I have to keep doing ongoing follow-ups. So one of the follow-ups is, is I've been waiting since March 3rd on, I want to know how many of my members received their vaccine, their stipend that was for non-vaccinated. I still have no response. The next one is, I did get something from Dulcinea today that they're still trying to find the information. I'm asking for all the work injuries of classified employees that have happened in the last two or three years. I need that data for work on comp purposes or injuries on work, on the district. I'm still waiting for the status of my CBA. Pam Mammler sent me the same thing and I already had. We have not had a written contract in this district since, I believe the last one was 2017, maybe 20. The district has failed twice to print it correctly and we have yet to got the whole thing done, but I'd like to have my contract. It's in my contract. I get 50% of them and the district pays for 50. The union splits the cost. We need a contract. My members would like to have a contract. I have reached out to Pam Mammler numerous times for an opening bargaining date. We still haven't met. I can't get a date set. I have probably sent seven emails and texts. I just need to know, when can I meet with the district? I don't think that's asking something too much. We have one reopen and a wage reopen. We need dates. Last year, we tried to get the Juneteenth in to our contract. It's still not there. June's coming up. Juneteenth is a federal holiday. It's still not on the district calendar. Classified are going to honor Juneteenth. So the district needs to get on that. It's not acceptable. Then I have another one that is, prior end of strike, we negotiated the same exact dental plan, two of the dental plan, whatever it is, teachers and vision. The district never honored the vision. They had to do a very short open enrollment for the medical. I had to go to Keyshawn myself and explain it. Nobody had explained the benefit package. I went in again and told her, you need to get S E I U on the same vision plan as the teachers. Our members should get two pair of glasses a year. I have tons of members going in trying to get their second pair of glasses. It's not been handled. So my question to you, Board, is, do my members start bringing invoicing the district for their second pair of glasses? Is that going to be the process this year? Because I believe we've passed the open enrollment stage.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
T C S. We will go to Teamsters.
Thank you. Greetings, distinguished Board members. I'm Alan Dory. I'm an elected Teamsters Business Agent for the last 30 years and I represent two of the five bargaining units here. That makes 40% of the bargaining units. But numbers don't necessarily always speak the whole story. I certainly don't have 40% of the members. I have two of the five groups. I only have about 100 members. Everyone counts, not just one of the bargaining units. When you go out and start your car, if you don't have a battery, as tiny as it is, as tiny as a portion is of your car as that is, your car is not going to start. I want to let you know that the district still has a better reserve out there than we've had in the past, but it's misleading. Those numbers are misleading. It came from not filling spots during the beginning of the COVID and then from funds. We're still running, in my opinion, a deficit spending. And in the past, even though we've just heard other unions speak and say that those numbers are wrong, they brought an auditor in that they wanted to do the books and the result matched the other ones. And it said that we were deficit spending. So I have a problem with that. Now, I heard this board being thanked over and over again last week and again this week, that you're a super majority. And look, what's better than being a super majority and being thanked for being a super majority is actually being a super board. A board that cares about the district, a board that cares about the community, a board that certainly cares about the students and especially the ones that won't make it on their own. And a board that cares about each of the bargaining units. To be that super board, that's what you'd have to do. Now, while I represent only two of the four bargaining groups, I want you to know that my bargaining groups continue to support Superintendent Aguilar. And we're not trying to sit there and manipulate this board to do something because we bought all of you or most of you a chance to get, to serve this community. I don't know that any of you came in and said, look, I want to be a puppet for any bargaining group. You probably all became board members because you had a vision of making a difference. So I'm going to call on you to remember those visions that you had because that's who we all serve. Me as a union leader, US board members, the superintendent as the superintendent of this district, each of these bargaining groups, they support the community and the children. That's what we're here for. You saw children come into the board just a week ago. They probably won't make it on their own. Those are the kind of kids that Superintendent Aguilar cares about. And you know what? Those kids are going to sink if we just bring in a puppet superintendent and then the next one and the next one and the next one. So please, don't just be changing superintendents because you have one group saying, hey, you're the super majority that we paid for. Don't do that, please. Remember what brought you in here as a board. I want all the children to succeed, all of them. And a puppet superintendent won't do that. Can I use the rest of my time for my Teamsters group? Because that's the next, I have two groups. So I'm cheating a little. I have two groups, so.
Have the time, sir.
Because we're 40%, you know.
Yeah. Add another three minutes on for the.
Thank you. So please remember what you were elected for and what you wanted to accomplish when you first said, geez, I put my name on a piece of paper and say I want to run. Remember that. Remember what had you, drive you to do something that was to serve the community, to make a difference. I mean, my God, if I couldn't make a difference, I'd be retired right now. And, and I hope that you guys want to make a difference. And if you forgot about it, make that difference. So I look forward to bargaining with my, my two groups for, with the district. I look for the professionalism that we had before and I'm confident that this district could do it. Again, I'm going to urge you to remember what you were elected for and what you wanted to accomplish if you were elected to serve and not just who paid for your election. And I want to, since I have a minute or so left, I'm going to also say thank you to the board for doing something great for the bus drivers. I've represented bus drivers in, in three of my five school district bargaining contracts for 30 years. And they are kind of like that battery. If you don't have those school bus drivers, you know, you just don't have the district succeeding. And, and of course, the teachers tonight. What a great privilege to see exceptional teachers being honored. I'm an old guy. I could turn 70 this year. I can remember teachers by name from over 50, 55 years ago that made a difference in my life and I'm very grateful to them. And thank you, Board. I hope that you hear that I'm looking for your success and I'm looking for the success of the district and the students especially. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to go, okay, so those are all of our employee organizations. Oh, do we, we, I'm sorry, brother. You came spoke earlier and I, and I thought you had you, but.
Wait, just a different subject. Is there a process to coming up to the dais real fast to start? You can start my time? I just want to make sure I walk up there and it's okay or?
There's, there's nobody that's going to tackle you, sir.
While I will address that, I do want to start by saying thank you for your work with S E I U. U P E stands Whole Hardly in Support of S E I U and what they do and we know they need raises for sure. So I do want to mention that and thank you for providing support to the bus drivers who take our kids to and fro. Now, U P E has been trying to surface the idea of concern for safety for a while. And I just showed you a picture of one of our principal's left eye right above. And that happened today from a student who she still describes as a good student who was on something. And it took five police ultimately to hold this kid in a capacity that was safe. But our principal was there to serve the situation on the campus. And the safety needs of all of our staff and students on our campus is first and foremost for all of our U P E members on our minds. And I want to share just one thing with you as we think about this. My mother is dealing with aphasia, which is under the umbrella of dementia. And her doctor took away the driving privileges from her. And the doctor was explaining to my mom this, I need to do this one day early rather than one day late. And for Rosemont, our moves came one day late. And we saw during COVID how fast we can mobilize on things when we make it a priority. And while we appreciate Deputy Superintendent Allen work on increasing our safety, there's still more to do. We can't provide the learning and the teaching that we need to for our students when they are not safe. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your commitment to hearing all of us about this, but this is a serious concern. And I ask us, what are we willing to do in the name of safety? What's one thing we're willing to do in the name of safety? And I urge us to do it before it's too late. Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your support for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to District Advisory Committees. Do we have any of our advisory committees in this space tonight? Which advisory committee, sir? Come on down, L cap.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Education members. This is Nate Dobrnick for District Four. I'm one of your appointees to the Local Control Accountability Plan's Parent Advisory Council. This is kind of a tough act to follow today. There's a lot of dynamic action going on here. I just want to mention briefly, as a personal note, all of these aspects that you talk about today, celebrating success, the budgetary, safety, all these aspects roll through our minds as we go through and try to create the best possible recommendations for the Local Control and Accountability Plan. We do continue to meet on a biweekly basis with the goal of having our recommendations prepared for you for next month. And as Mr. DeYoung, frequent contributor here, mentioned last month, we did lose a lot of momentum with the loss of our district liaison. However, with the recent hire of Crystal Thomas, we are back in action. We are meeting, as I mentioned, biweekly and Ms. Thomas is extraordinarily accomplished and very capable and has become a great communicator and strong facilitator of these meetings. In fact, many of these meetings, we actually get specialists from the district that come in and provide additional insight, like we had, you know, deep dive into MTSS, brought back for a second time so we could really fully understand where all of these fundings and programmatic elements are going for the students. We also, as mentioned last month, though, attendance is a bit spotty and so we would encourage you, if there are vacancies or, you know, folks who have resigned, please appoint new ones. We can do even better with a full roster of folks. Folks who are there are dedicated and contributing, but obviously we want that full district representation from all parties in there. And I want to leave with two other items. Well, just one actually right there. We, I imagine that this year's L cap will very much resemble the current one. We just lost so much momentum. However, for those of us who are deeply engaged and it does take a while to learn this role, there's a lot of acronyms and a tremendous amount of learning. We've already started targeting ideas and action items where we could eliminate redundancies and bring in some efficiencies and really add maybe a little bit more clarity to the action items. And one of the things we're really looking for is having a bit more objective data in there. I saw that within your strategic plan initiatives, really what you can't monitor, what you don't measure. And so rather than making things more aspirational, getting a little more targeted on how to actually go year to year with some of these and track. And so I think that would make it very helpful for future PAC members to be able to make assessments on where there's actually success and areas for improvement. So thank you and we'll see you again next month.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Thank you for being with us.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to, do we, Student Advisory Committee? Okay, now we're going to go to eight point three, Student Member Report.
Can I just mix it in when we read our, all of our?
The last one?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so we're going to defer that until we make our board comments at the end at request of Member Zirk. And so now we're going to go to item nine point one.
And for this item, I have Jesse Gusteau, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, presenting.
Okay.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, President Rhodes, Members of the Board, Superintendent Aguilar. This presentation is on our AB 1200 Public Disclosure and Approval of the M O U between S U S D and Service Employees International Union.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Great, thank you.
Just joking, joking.
Sorry, give me just a moment. I just turned it back on, but. All righty, starting off, we have our core value and guiding principle. Next slide, please. Only one acronym in this presentation tonight, M O U, Memorandum of Understanding. Next slide, please. Starting things off with our agenda, we have key provisions of the M O U and then we'll be moving on to, into financial considerations and lastly, Q and A. Next slide. Key provisions of the M O U include that it was fully executed on April 17th with a retroactive effective date of December 1st, 2022. It included salary schedule increases for bus drivers, diligently behind the wheel trainer, school bus driver instructor positions. There's also provisions that included current employee step placement. So for those that are 15 years or more of service based on step three of the new salary schedule and those that are less than 15 years placed on step two. Additionally, there's language on new hires, which are to be placed at step one with a maximum of step three based on experience as needed to recruit highly, highly qualified candidates. Lastly, there is a provision on hourly compensation for those eligible employees that volunteer to drive a school bus and have the necessary certifications and they are to be compensated hourly by the provisions of this M O U. Next slide. This takes us to the financial considerations with an estimated salary and benefit cost of 4.3 million across three years and the ongoing cost is to be funded with unrestricted general funds. That takes us to any questions?
Beforehand, do we have any public comment on the topic?
There is none.
Okay, we'll go into board discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion, I will move, and you will second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, a student preferential.
Aye.
All right, Superintendent, Member Kayada.
Do we have to move this into action?
No.
Okay, yay.
Yay.
Is that, is that a yes, Member Kayada? Okay.
You can.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Yay.
Yay, thank you. Motion passes with all board members that are present. Thank you. All right. Additionally, there's language on new hires, which are to be placed at Step 1 with a maximum of Step 3 based on experience as needed to recruit highly qualified candidates. Lastly, there is a provision on hourly compensation for those eligible employees that volunteer to drive a school bus and have the necessary certifications, and they are to be compensated hourly by the provisions of this MOU. Next slide. This takes us to the financial considerations with an estimated salary and benefit cost of $4.3 million across three years, and the ongoing cost is to be funded with unrestricted general funds. That takes us to any questions?
Beforehand, do we have any public comment on the topic?
There is none.
Okay, we'll go into board discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion, I will move... I'll accept this, and you will second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, a student preferential?
Aye.
All right, Superintendent, Member Kayata?
Do we have to move this into action?
No.
Okay, yay.
Yay.
Is that a yes, Member Kayata? Okay. Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Yay.
Yay, thank you. Motion passes with all board members that are present. Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to item 9.6, Approval Resolution Number 3317. Nathaniel? Hello?
Hello, Board President Rhodes, Board Member Superintendent. This evening before you is Resolution 3317 to approve the Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. What this grant opportunity is, is up to $30 million for the creation of an urban forestry and green schoolyards project at 13 of our sites. That's about $2.5 million for renovations within the campus area to address a number of components in relation to greening the schoolyard and play area, creating more urban forestry feel and connection with nature. The 13 sites that were identified for this grant opportunity were identified through the Facilities Master Plan Equity Index, and they include Abraham Lincoln, Brett Hart, Earl Warren, Ethel Phillips, Isidore Cohen, John Bidwell, New Joseph Bonheim, John Slope, John Steele K8, Luther Burbank, Parkway, and Woodbarn. So, the purpose of this grant is to create green schoolyards that protect the health, well-being, and educational opportunity of children most vulnerable to the increased temperatures and extreme heat across California. These 13 sites were identified because their playground areas and landscape needed investment and improvement. Also, these areas did not have much shade or opportunity for these students to engage in nature play outdoors. So, we're really hopeful to receive this grant opportunity. If so, we have three years to plan, bring in architects, outline what outdoor learning opportunities look like, urban forestry, community garden spaces at these schools look like. We also have the opportunity to bring in two new positions under this grant for a total of five years. One of those positions is a outdoor learning trainer, and we've worked with our partners in the academic department to outline what that would look like. The second position would be a community forester to help the maintenance department maintain these new spaces that we would install. So, with your approval of this resolution, it would be the final piece of our application that we submitted last Friday.
Thank you so much, Nathaniel. Is there any public comment around this?
There is not.
There's none. Any board comment around this? Member Phillips?
This is fantastic. I... Maybe this is a question that shouldn't be asked, but as a person with really bad asthma and allergies, will we be taking consideration into certain trees and things that are part of this urban forest that we're building, or that's something that's coming later, I'm sure? But English plane trees, I think that's what they're called. They are the worst tree ever. They're beautiful, they provide absolute coverage, shade, but they stop some of us from breathing. So, I just kind of put that in there. So, hopefully, we're looking at a... You know, to make sure we have trees, because a lot of our kids in these areas also have issues with asthma. So, I just want to make sure that I send it on your list. I'm done talking.
Yeah, as a person that suffers from asthma and outdoor allergies pretty severely as well, I understand. This is a planning and then implementation grant, and so we will be creating community engagement committees at each of the sites to figure out what each of the community's needs, wants are, and desires are for each of those sites. We'll also be creating a district-wide committee as well in order to figure out what resiliency looks like and to identify proper trees and plants to be planted. Everything from down small details to what type of plant can we plant within close proximity to roof lines, or what does that shade piece look like and where students are playing that might have those allergies?
Member Singh?
I just want to say that I'm really hopeful that we get this funding as well. I think it's important to acknowledge that temperatures are increasing, climate change is real, climate issues are real, and the environment is very, very important to protect, because it provides for us also. I, too, look forward to the good news, I hope. And then, I've seen some videos online around how schools have been transformed with some of the playgrounds, and it's, in some ways, has decreased temperatures by 10, 12 degrees, maybe more. And I don't know if painting and other things are part of the idea here, but I'm sure you know better. Either way, I look forward to seeing what comes of this, so thank you.
Absolutely. Member Kayata?
Thank you for bringing this grant to us, and now we have the ability to use state money to do something amazing for our community. Thank you for your continued commitment to equity in our district and having that be the lens by which we identify these sites. So, thank you.
Well said, Member Kayata. Seeing there's no one else in the queue, I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second? A second all around? I think we had Gracie there first and Pritchett second? So, that's two seconds, can you believe that? And student preferential?
Aye.
Superintendent? Member Kayata?
Yay.
Member Phillips?
I'm sorry. Aye.
Member Pritchett? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Motion passes with all members who are present. Thank you. Okay.
President Rhodes, I just wanted to let you know there are some teachers here that want to get their awards, so they're gonna pack them up.
Oh, yes, I thought you guys were bringing us fruit cups.
I thought I was gonna get the big apple.
Yeah. The big apple. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to item 9.7, Budget Investment Update. Hello, Rose.
Thank you, President Rhodes. As Chief Business Officer Ramos comes up, I just want to very quickly introduce this topic to the board. This is the beginning of our budget development process. Our team has a lot of information to share with you about proposals that we are bringing to the board for your consideration, your deliberations. We will be taking very copious notes about questions that you have, about inquiries, additional information that you might be requesting. Please expect that probably now through budget adoption action, and that could be, that will be in June at some point, we, in some years, have had a special board meeting. This will be an item on every agenda, because we do want to make sure that we capture what you're looking for in terms of investments for fiscal year 2324. So, our team has spent a lot of time working on these proposals, and that is what they are, they're proposals for your deliberation and consideration. So, with that, Ms. Ramos?
Sure. I will keep it brief and turn it over here to my colleagues, but as the superintendent stated, these are some district priorities that we'd like to share with the board and the community for our budget year 2324. And I'm gonna, at this point, turn it over, I believe, to Erin.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent. I'm excited to be here tonight to share our strategic priority investments with you. In all of my time in this district, as a teacher, as a training specialist, as a site leader, as a central office leader, and as a parent, I have not seen this level of coordinated commitment to improving student outcomes with both evidence and research-based practices in the areas that you see highlighted here. High-quality instruction, multi-tiered systems of support, culturally responsive professional learning, effective talent programs focused on recruitment and retention, and network upgrades and centralized workforce processes. Our teams have been hard at work investigating and collaborating to bring what we think are truly transformational investments in both our adults and our children. Knowing that we have this unique opportunity to leverage the funding available to truly change the course of teaching and learning in our district, especially for our historically underserved... I'm sorry, our historically underserved students is inspiring, motivating, and grounding for all of us. You've seen this before, our problem of practice, I'm just going to anchor us back into it. So, as a reminder, to determine the problem of practice for our improvement work last summer, we analyzed our student outcomes and the needs assessment conducted within our district, including CCEE's Systemic Instruction Review, the Council of Great City Schools Special Education Audit, and the Capital Suspensions Reports. We then identified that the root causes of our problem of practice center on the lack of instructional vision and professional learning in service of students within a multi-tiered system of supports. In this informational presentation this evening, we will discuss investments as they relate to our theory of action and building system-wide capacity around delivering high-quality instruction so that our students are provided an equitable opportunity to graduate with the skills, mindsets, and dispositions to be college and career-ready. I will now hand it over to Associate Superintendent of Academics Mary Harden Young.
Good evening. You will notice that professional learning is at the heart of our problem of practice and our theory of action, because a growing body of research, some cited here on this slide and beyond, suggests a strong connection between teacher professional learning, improving teacher practices, and growth in student learning outcomes, as noted on this slide. Based on these findings, as we make our presentation tonight, you will see how we have woven professional learning through all five of the strategic priorities that you're familiar with. And in this slide and the next slide, you will see how we are proposing to invest in professional learning for our adults in service of improved outcomes for students along with direct student supports. This slide and the next show you the five priorities. As Erin highlighted, we have a unique opportunity tonight to present this level of coordinated commitment to improving student outcomes. I share in that excitement. I have been with the district for many years as an educator, and I can't remember the last time we were able to present budget proposals and budget ideas to the Board of Education that have this level of direct impact on our students.
So, our first strategic priority this evening, culturally responsive professional learning, is highlighted here. Because of our predictable poor outcomes for our historically underserved communities, it is important for us to center our work on addressing adult mindsets and practices that do not serve our students. An investment in professional learning anchored in anti-racist, anti-bias, and trauma-informed practices will channel our focus to support the needs for our Black and Brown students who suffer the most from our lack of systemic coherence and can be addressed by professional learning that targets high-quality instruction with expanded instructional supports empowering staff to be leaders and mentors and supporting implementation. Our next strategic priority, multi-tiered systems of support, is highlighted on the next several slides. In order to successfully implement MTSS system-wide to reach and meet the needs of all of our students, each school site needs a highly functioning site leadership team, also called an SLT. SLTs should be representative of all key stakeholders at the site, including regular classroom education teachers, special education staff, administration, and include family and community input. SLTs are vital to MTSS implementation as they help distribute the workload and leadership among members so that leadership is shared. Teachers are empowered to make intentional decisions that affect their student and community population. MTSS coaches will collaborate with site leadership teams to design and coordinate evidence-based, culturally responsive, tiered instruction and intervention strategies across academic, behavior, social-emotional learning, and attendance. This includes universal design for learning, inclusive educational models, progress monitoring, data analysis, database problem solving, and evaluation of tiered instruction and intervention programs. To provide time, resources, and compensation for collaboration at school sites and to build the capacity of all staff across the district, the purpose of the collaboration is to systematically build capacity for all staff at all levels in the district to implement supports for students receiving all tiers of support. This proposed funding structure, so our next priority, I'm sorry, high-quality instruction supports focuses on several strategies, including structured literacy, culturally relevant library and staffing, and you'll see on the next slide, as well, instructional materials adoptions. This proposed funding for structured literacy includes enhanced foundational skills curriculum for new and struggling readers in K-12, including English learners and students identified with dyslexia. However, since curriculum alone will not suffice to achieve the significant gains on students' reading skills needed to move the approximately 70% of our third graders who are not yet reading at grade level, it also includes funding for a comprehensive, research-based educator learning program, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, also known as Letters, accredited by the International Dyslexia Association to help teachers develop the knowledge base necessary to effectively use any curriculum. This program is grounded in the science of reading, guiding teachers to understand how children learn how to read, what happens in the brain, and that by reading, that reading requires multiple parts of the brain working, learning to work together. By investing in structured literacy, we are supporting our educators to prioritize the literacy learning needs of our historically underserved students. Proposed high-quality instruction in the area of curriculum instruction and professional learning supports also includes funding to provide equitable access to school libraries, culturally relevant materials, and updated evidence-based ELA and math instructional materials that reflect student identities and experiences.
Excuse me, Ms. Henson, I just want to make sure that we're coordinating the presentations, the slides. Okay, good.
My apologies. This one got split into two pieces. So, we have here the funding that provides equitable access to school libraries, culturally relevant materials, and then on the next slide, investment in updated evidence-based ELA and math instructional materials that reflect student identities and experiences.
As we dive deeper into the multi-tiered systems of supports, we're going to pay attention to the areas of attendance and engagement. In this first funding proposal, we recognize that attendance creates a significant barrier to student achievement. Attendance support specialists increase the district's ability to provide greater access to students in areas of attendance through their outreach and support to families and school sites. As this is the last year for our grant, we are looking for sustainable funding streams. Our core value and guiding principles speak to equity and access for all students. In this second proposal, in order to further address equity and access, this proposed funding would offer monthly transportation stipends to parents to assist in getting their child to a school that can support their unique needs and interests.
I can speak on this next issue. I do see our new athletic director, Mr. David Parsh, in the back. We also, as we have done in other areas, board members in facilities, we also have identified some inequities in the world of extracurricular activities, and more specifically, in athletics. And we are very interested in presenting a proposal that would result in the district purchasing equipment to improve the appearance of athletic fields for safety and performance. Think of specialized lawn mowers and other equipment so that our students have access to better playing conditions and fields across the district. It also would apply to maintenance. The idea here is that we might consider hiring additional staff to properly upkeep athletic fields year-round as our students engage in athletics throughout the district. And finally, we are also in this area wanting to propose, on a one-time basis, the purchasing of student athletic equipment across the district, and that ranges from batting cages, ball machines, weights, scoreboards, track and field supplies, everything from things that I don't really know what they are, competition... that I don't really know what they are, competition starting blocks, featherlight volleyball systems, wrestling mats, scoreboards in all of our gyms, blocking sleds, medical privacy tents for our trainers, et cetera, et cetera. Again, on a one-time basis, just to be able to provide greater opportunities for our students to access equipment that, as I've been briefed by our team, most school districts, if not all in the region, provide to their student athletes, and we just do not, on the basis of really being a community that's been conditioned that if we want to purchase those, not services, but if we want to purchase that type of equipment, it always depends on fundraising capacity and interest across the district.
As we bring our focus back to high-quality instructional supports, we know that our English learners comprise 19% of the district's students, yet continue to experience challenges in achieving academically, and we recognize the unique opportunity that is presented to our English learners. As such, it is critically important to ensure we provide the extra support required for them to learn a language other than the one spoken at home. This funding will hire additional instructional aides to work directly with our support of our bilingual students. This funding will allow us to have those aides support English learners by providing supplemental support in integrated ELD strategies to ensure our English learners have access to the core curriculum. You'll also see the next funding proposal, the district recognizes and understands the varying needs of our individual school sites, and this funding proposal would provide more discretionary funding to allow each individual campus to better identify and meet the areas of their unique students. Continuing on with high-quality instructional supports, earlier tonight, we heard from several members from our MONG immersion program at Susan B. Anthony. This proposal will provide the financial support needed for our Spanish, MONG, Mandarin, and Cantonese dual-language immersion programs to expand into high school and through middle school and into high school. This would provide continuity in our programs for students who are currently enrolled and want to continue developing these critical second-language skills. This additional funding includes hiring teachers to create this pathway and strengthening the curriculum.
And along with that, what happens at the school site as we're looking at hiring additional staff, we have to be thinking about our substitute pools for when staff can't be there for reasons expected or unexpected. So everything from a leave of absence or a vacancy, we have to make sure that we are better prepared than we have been in the past to meet that need, whether short-term, day-to-day, or long-term. So this expand substitute staffing would include professional development opportunities for our substitute teachers specifically focused in some of our high-need areas, like language in terms of dual immersion, like Waldorf, so that when we have those gaps, we're able to cover. Additionally, looking at increased staffing pool in order to, in order to make sure that the schools that we have the trickiest time getting substitute teachers to can be staffed so that teachers, as they need to and aren't able to be in the classroom, can expect regular coverage. So looking at things like full-time teachers, that means full-time substitutes at specific schools, especially those that are hard to get substitutes at, on a regular basis, and compensating them for that. Thank you. Additionally, in terms of effective talent management programs focused on recruitment and retention, we have in the past been, the past few years, really been working and focusing on the recruitment part, trying to build pipelines, looking classified-to-certificated teacher residency programs and things like that. We also want to focus more on retention. Retention affects some of those culture-climate pieces, we want to look at diversity, and so this initial part looks at additional staff, at least wanted to focus specifically on DEI with regards to, you know, known, documented, proven strategies. So opportunities to come and take a look at ourselves, to see what we could and could not be doing in order to increase retention in the district, so department, system-wide. And then reducing staffing vacancies by building effective strategies related to that. We want to look at, and Bob's going to talk a little bit about it, not just systems, not just where we're advertising, not just the things we are already doing, but looking at automating what some of those pieces look like so we can be more effective and efficient in doing so. To go a little bit deeper into that part, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Looking at this slide, so we've got the three data processes in this slide. Well, the substitute absence management, HR process automation, and employee evaluation will all streamline our current HR procedures with more accurate data in a timely manner. Looking at our adopting a substitute and absent management system, it will accurately account for absences for both certificated and classified. It'll help us find substitutes to place a qualified sub in classrooms to support uninterrupted student learning. It will streamline absence reporting, any needed approvals, and validation, but also support processing absences quickly while using verified data to project staffing needs. Automating our human resource processes will automate processes for both onboarding, separation, and position management and escape, which is our HR and finance system. Will also allow staff to enter onboarding data in a streamlined fashion with less data entry. Right now, it takes a manual process where we create accounts, and it's a slow process, especially at the very beginning of the year, we have all these new staff coming onboard. And we'll also reduce our three separate HR systems. We have a very old system, an old server, and we have one that goes up until 2006, and then 2006 on. We're hoping to get all of that into one system. And we'll also allow position control to be more accurate and in real time. Our district-wide system for conducting employee evaluations will streamline our capture of the evaluation process and its documentation. It will create auto reminders for key benchmarks and due dates for the evaluation process. It'll help provide ease of data entry in a standardized form. It'll allow performance tracking with metrics to set up an evaluation process, but most importantly, all of this is in one data system. Now I'm going to pass it back to Rose to finish up.
Thank you, Bob. Last slide, and it's a pretty simple one, it's just a total of the proposed investments. We have them divided into two categories for you. One is ongoing, meaning these costs are repetitive every year, and the other is just a one-time cost, that would be like the equipment. So in the ongoing, it's about $45.9 million. For the one-time, it's $27.4 million in proposed investments. And that pretty much concludes the presentation, and now Superintendent, turn it over for questions and answers.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have public comment on this topic?
We do have one speaker, David Fisher.
Okay, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. So it's kind of a cliche, and we say it a lot because it's true, you know, our students' learning conditions are members' working conditions and vice versa, right? And so, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to look at this ahead of time, but a lot of the things that are in here, of course, we're not only in support of, but they've actually been our proposals since 2016, '17 around professional learning, anti-racist, culturally relevant, and full-time substitutes, for example. We've had that proposal since 2016, '17, that consistently in the past been rejected by the district, so we're glad to see this is on here. What we, and then MTSS, we've been trying to engage the district on that for quite a while. So glad to see a lot of these things on here. We have some other ideas, too. Looking forward to engaging legitimately with the district on these issues, and, you know, it's the law, and it's also the best way to actually get these kind of ideas implemented with the, you know, the most buy-in and the most input from your teachers. So we look forward to hearing from the district in a real, legitimate, and engaging way on these and other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
No, this is exciting stuff, man. Should have more. Okay, we're going to go to my colleagues. If you have questions, thoughts, please line up in the queue. All right. Yeah, some people hopped in. Brave souls. Member Singh.
Keep my comments, my under-the-breath comments. I was saying it's like a radio station, you know, like waiting for people to call in. I want to talk about one piece that I'm excited about. Actually, David just mentioned it, but the anti-racist, anti-bias training is long overdue. So I'm glad to see that on here. I'm also personally really excited to see some of the discussions around athletic equipment. Having seen the state of why, once we open the field at Hiram Johnson, just see the excitement on students, I think every school deserves athletic equipment and other equipment that helps them become student athletes, right? And we do know that sports plays a huge role in helping our students. Now, that's a tough question, just to get us started, but the total cost of the proposed investment is listed at $46 million ongoing, and a one-time cost of $27 million. So my simple question is, how do we sustain this? Listening to public comment, I'm either getting commentary that we are either deficit spending or we have a surplus. So I kind of want to know which is it, because I'm a bit confused, because how can we sustain this while also sustaining and supporting the teachers who are going to need the training to get this work done? So I'm sure it's part of a larger conversation around budget, but if I'm doing my math right, we're looking at $74, $73 million if we combine the ongoing and one-time. So I just want to figure out how, where are these numbers, and how do we sustain the numbers if we're being told we don't have the funds sometimes?
Thank you for your question, and I'm going to just frame this and then ask Ms. Rose to give more details. Because these are proposals that we're making this evening to the board, board members, we will want to hear the deliberations and then come back to you as early as the 18th, having inputted some of this information into our calculations, our multi-year calculations. Again, this is in preparation for budget adoption, where you will take a vote and say, this is what we want our budget to look like for '23, '24. So this is not us assuming that you're in favor of these proposed investments and indicating that we have all of the resources to sustain these expenditures. That would be information that we'd come back to you depending on the deliberations that we hear from you today. If everybody said, yeah, we're all in agreement, please come back with more details for the total expenditure of this amount, then we would do that. Otherwise, we are presenting these as proposals, and Ms. Rose, if you want to just kind of, sorry, Ms. Ramos, if you want to just kind of explain then the process that you and your team then do once we hear from our board in terms of their perspectives.
Absolutely. So, yeah, there's quite a list of items here, and obviously, not all of these items, assuming that they would be something the board would be interested in investing, would be implemented day to one, meaning July 1 of this year for the coming year. Some of these are staggered. They would take place over time. One of them, obviously, is a textbook adoption that would take time to get implemented. So you may not see that in your financials maybe until year two, just depends. And the same may be true for some of these items. So it just depends on the priority and the selection of the items, when they will be implemented in the budget, so that we can then run those through and then provide you with an accurate, you know, approximation of what it would, the impact it would have on our budget.
So I get that. I think for me, it's just confusing because it puts a number. So when I read a number, I'm thinking, so this is the investment. And of course, anybody who's watching or sitting or any of us are thinking, oh, we want all of this, right? So I want to know realistically what the number is, because otherwise, I'm going to sit here and say, let's do it all. And then you're going to say, we can't do it all. So then why are we getting a presentation on everything we can possibly do when we can't actually do it? So it's confusing to me. I don't know if it's confusing anyone else, I'll let folks talk, but that's just my concern when I read it, is these are all things that everybody wants. But can we, if we can't actually do them, then I get worried when I see a budget, when I see a page that tells me what the total proposed investments would be, because realistically, we wouldn't make that number as an investment, because if we did, we would be out of money in a very short period of time. So it's just, it's confusing.
Yeah, I totally understand. We just wanted the community, the board, to know what the cost would be to implement the needs that are presented here to you tonight. Yeah, obviously, we can't afford everything, but that's how great the needs are for the district. Just information.
And if I could just add, team to our board, we certainly could come back on the 18th at our board meeting, Member Singh and others, and present to you, you know, our best thinking about the impact that it would have on the budget. Again, you will want to consider all of those things prior to the adoption in June as well. So those are very, very fair questions, and you might then ask questions that are more budget-specific to Ms. Ramos and her team. But again, we have a couple of board meetings to, in fact, do that. So if you're okay with that, Member Singh, I'm taking your comments to mean that maybe you'd like to see the impact of a $46 million investment on our budget moving forward, just to have additional questions that you might have, once we come back with that information as well.
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, I, impact, but also I know that we can't sustain a $46 million ongoing budget in this, if that's what we're talking about. So I think I would want to know more of a realistic
Okay.
...amount
Yeah.
...that we actually can spend, so that we can actually deliberate on what we need to prioritize according to the model that staff is showing us. If you're showing us a pyramid of what you want to focus on, then we have to figure out which of these buckets actually fall into those pyramid models that you're showing us, so we can prioritize them. Because then I don't want to give you half a pyramid. I don't think anyone wants to give half of anything. So I think I'm just trying to be helpful in saying, tell us what we can actually get to, so that when we get a presentation, we can help, or we can start thinking about how we want to respond in a way that's supporting you all in those goals.
And I'm not suggesting this is a solution, but I'm looking to Chief Heap. We did present the information in those buckets of the pyramid, but perhaps an infographic that ties the investments to each of the portions in the pyramid might be helpful to our community and to our board as well.
Okay.
With amounts, proposed amounts.
Thank you, Member Singh. Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President. First, I want to thank staff for the thoughtfulness in this. You can tell there was a lot of hard work that went into this. So I have to admit, when I saw the dual-language immersion junior high to high school, I got a little giddy, because I know we've had a lot of students have come and talked to us here at the board, and it's been a topic of discussion for sure. So, and I agree with Member Singh, I wish we could do every single bit of these, and hopefully, one day we can. I know we have cut a lot over the years for our students, and I've asked questions up here of like, what are we doing to put student, put these resources back into the students? And right now, we have a little bit of money to be able to do some of that, right? And so it's good to see it within this PowerPoint. I do have some requests that I would like to see, and they might be just kind of small. I know at one point, we were investing into elementary sports programs, which gave kids an opportunity to play sports that might not otherwise be able to afford to play and have that experience, and I don't see that in here. So I'm wondering if we can maybe see about adding something of that nature. Obviously, it would be a board discussion, but knowing what the cost of that would be, would be helpful. Also, we've had Mr. Lozato up here, you know, giving us safety presentations. We always ask like, what do you need from us? Well, obviously, it takes more money, right? But I don't see safety in this. So I like to see some kind of safety dot or bullet, not dot, bullet in here that says, here's what we would like to invest into safety, right? And also, you know, we see you know, we see a lot with our special ed. You know, we have a lot of challenges with our special ed. And I might have missed it, and if I have, please, please speak up and tell me, hey, it was right here. But I'd like to see some kind of more investments into special ed of what can we do to improve those services for kids? How can we get additional training for our staff, so we're not lacking in resources for our special ed students? And then, this is probably just a small little line, but we have some fantastic CTE programs at a couple of our high schools. And I was told this year that the CTE budget for Rosemont High School got cut. And I was quite surprised, cut dramatically. And they even have more students that they're serving. And these kids are graduating and going into working for the trades on apprenticeships and making six-figure salaries. Like, this is an important, important thing that we should be investing in our district. And I would really like to see it later rolled out. I know I've talked to the superintendent about this, about, you know, seeing it rolled out into our other comprehensive high schools and giving other students an opportunity. And so I don't know where that fits in here, Superintendent, but maybe seeing, while we have some extra funds, what can we do? I know we, didn't we receive some additional funds from Assemblymember McCarty at one point? And, but I don't know where that fits in here, or if it does or not, but I just want to bring that up.
Yeah. Thank you, member Pritchett. I'll just say, because, at least since I've been superintendent, we've not presented this level of proposed investments, we're probably going to get some of this wrong. And so that's exactly why we're looking for deliberations and questions from you. In the case of safety, again, this isn't a summary of what we already have in our budget. We have a set allocation for ongoing funding for our safety efforts right now. What we're looking in terms of your discussions and deliberations is a little bit of what you said. Hey, I, as a board member, am interested in maybe increasing that ongoing funding. That's the kind of question and comments that we want to hear from you at this board meeting, on the 18th as well. We're taking notes. We will come back and provide more information about what you've heard about CTE, those kinds of things. But again, also, just, we are hearing that you want to understand a little bit more about how CTE falls into some of these investments. The same thing for special ed as well. So we will be prepared to respond to your questions as it relates to, do these investments factor into supporting CTE, supporting our special ed programs, as well as our safety efforts?
Elementary sports.
Yeah.
Elementary sports also, again, is another one that is already ongoing in funding. If you were to say, I want to expand, or can you bring back something to expand that, then Mr. Parsh would get to work and start saying, okay, well, if we expanded to two more sports, it would cost this.
That's exactly what I'm asking. Yes.
So feel free to expand and provide more specifics on what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, if I may. Board member Pritchett, yes, we do have elementary sports built in our budget ongoing, so it's already in there. And the other thing, as far as safety and security is concerned, the infrastructure piece, that's covered by the bond. So we already have, our Measure H is already covering that, and our safety plan that's undergoing an assessment now will include the cost for that. And so that has a funding piece.
So for safety, because it's under the bond, when we talk about we need additional resources, is that also covered by the bond, and that's the conversation we need to have about the bond?
The resources that are covered under the bond include the infrastructure, like additional cameras, surveillance equipment, fencing, yeah, those kinds of items. But as far as staffing is concerned, that would be covered under general fund. And we did expand our safety and security staffing last year, and it is included in the budget going forward.
Yeah, I know we expanded it, and I know they're still stretched really thin, and that's why I was thinking about the expansion of it. And then also, just to kind of add on to that, mental health services, that needs to be in here.
Thank you, member Pritchett. And we're gonna go to member Kayata.
First thing I want to acknowledge is, we didn't get this very soon in advance, but I made a list of things as I went through it really quickly. And all, like, half the things I said have already been said. And I'm excited to see they were on the same page. I hope that should make for a productive discussion. I also did want to share my colleague's comments and lift up the work done by staff to put this together. I think this is incredibly responsive to comments we've been hearing over the past couple of years, and also representing the experience that we have before us. So really, really appreciate that. I just have a clarifying question. So this, all these investments here represent proposed new investments for funding we're not already spending. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm just going through my notes here. For special ed in particular, I wanted to raise that up. Staffing is something we've already been talking about, and that's, part of that's a negotiation conversation, of course. But in terms of expanding support for our IEP teams, that's something I'm interested in looking at within the context of an expanded special ed program, which, in my opinion, if implemented correctly, should pay for itself if we avoid having to settle with families who haven't received services. So I'm not talking about a dramatic investment necessarily, but maybe some sort of rollout of a pilot to find out what ways can we best support our IEP teams onsite beyond professional learning. So that was already mentioned. But I think, you know, what I hear from special ed parents and my experience as well, is that it's hard to coordinate all these deadlines, all these different types of services. Sometimes, you know, a principal doesn't know what we have, because it's some new thing that just got established at another school. And then you talk to a parent, and then you bring it back. Anyway, just, I think you know what I'm saying. A question about why the arts are not mentioned in here, despite a lot of conversation around that. Is that because that's Prop 28?
Yeah, member Kayata, and I hate to do this, but Ms. Hanson, who oversees the VAPA efforts here in the district, we did think about proposing an expansion that would have required, I think, an increase in staffing, I believe, related to offering more opportunities for students, I think, at the elementary level. Can you just touch on that? But again, I mean, this is again, why it's a deliberation. You might say, well, you know, I'd love to see, you know, what it might look like if you were to expand arts opportunities at elementary, and we'd come back with that information. But I know that we've done some thinking about that.
So when we first started looking at these investments, we did have VAPA included. But because of Prop 28, which is a whole separate effort, then what we're talking about for these investments, we did remove it from this, because there is a plan in being put into place for how we address the visual and performing arts using that Prop 28 funding, which would include a variety of supports, include expansion of FTE for music teachers, arts teachers. And also, one of the things that our VAPA coordinator, CJ DeAngelis, who you've all had the pleasure of meeting here, he, we have teacher residencies, arts residencies, that is a really effective way of bringing the arts to our students. And so also being able to expand that as well.
Okay. And I appreciate that. That was kind of what I was thinking. Just wanted to, you know, put a special emphasis on that. I know that you're all aware. I mean, my vision, which I think goes beyond Prop 28, is, you know, bringing music back to our classrooms, you know. It used to be like kids in kindergarten, when you were singing all, I mean, we still do that. But, you know, just really fully integrating to what schools were like when I was growing up.
Well, and what we know, too, is that we can use the arts to build literacy, to build our mathematics skills, right? So there's, you know, the, bringing the arts in is not just about the arts, but it's about building engagement around the other core content areas as well. So I agree with you, wanting to integrate all that. Can I respond really quickly, just on the special education front, and to member Pritchett as well? So one of the things that I think is important to note in this effort, particularly around high-quality instruction and MTSS, is that one of the things that we know is that our system is really focused on providing those Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions and even beyond, right? And so IEPs, we would consider even outside of the pyramid for MTSS. And so when we, when we think about this through the lens of MTSS, we need to ensure that we are meeting that threshold of 80% of every student group benefiting from Tier 1 universal instruction and supports. And so the idea being that we need to really shore up that universal support in order to avoid those referrals and lifting students into those Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports, when really what we need to do is improve our Tier 1. And so, you know, like member Singh said about the anti-racist, anti-bias work and the trauma-informed work, that that's really part of Tier 1. And if we're able to devote resources and build our capacity to create learning environments that are welcoming and inclusive and responsive to student needs, then we would be addressing some of those issues that actually elevate students into special education in the first place. So really trying to reduce the number of referrals by improving our Tier 1 foundational practices.
And I guess that would be, just before you walk away, so when you're talking about the investments in high-quality instruction and MTSS, would that include something like universal design for learning, or is that separate?
Yes. So just a quick, I will share with you, when we're looking at the board investments, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find a slide to take you back to our strategic priorities. I'd say it's slides three and four. Thank you. Okay, yep.
Sorry.
Okay, so I don't see the numbers on my slides. I apologize. So when we're looking at these strategic priorities, so culturally responsive professional learning, really focused on that anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-responsive work, MTSS implementation is really about building the capacity. And then if you go to the next slide, this strategic priority for high-quality Tier 1 instruction, so building collective efficacy through evidence of student learning and essential standards, and that structured literacy piece, when we're looking at high-quality Tier 1 instruction, we're also talking about universally designed and differentiated instruction. So that's absolutely part of that Tier 1 strategic priority. And that's through professional learning, right, and through support for our teachers and classified staff who are working directly with students to be able to deliver that quality of instruction.
Okay, really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I think I just have two more questions. But I'm glad we're gonna keep coming back to this, because I'm gonna go home and continue looking at this, I'm sure. For, sorry, where is it? Under workforce processes, there was an absence system, HR automation, and central evaluation, or, you know, coordination of evaluations. Can you just explain why? I know this is a small amount compared to the rest, but why are those ongoing expenses? Are we getting like a cloud-based license? Is that?
It is licensed software. And so we do have to pay that ongoing cost. So that's, then just maintaining the systems on a separate server. I mean, there's just licensing costs and those kind of things, so.
And do you anticipate any significant startup costs to integrating that? Like, you know, the first year, training staff, developing new procedures, or is this, is really just like a module onto what we have? It sounds like we're actually talking about replacing one of the most old systems that we have.
It will be, we do anticipate that price will drop down after the first year.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't have an estimate on that yet. So we've, we've looked at several of these evaluation systems already, so.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is just a comment, or it's a question. It's a big ask. And please tell me if this is too big of an ask, but to the extent we can tie any of this to the LCAP, I would appreciate that, so that we understand if this is something that our communities, our LCAP PAC has worked on, or if it's something new. Not to say we have to do it, we can't do it if it wasn't in the LCAP, but just so I can tie it back myself when I'm looking at these broader investments we're trying to make. That's it for me.
Thank you, member Kayata. Oh, I thought, member Phillips, I thought I saw you in there. Was that, was that wrong? No? Okay. Not wrong. All right. Great. Member Singh.
I actually have a simple request of the superintendent. You mentioned, Christina, you mentioned safety. So can we actually have a presentation, a little update presentation on safety? I know Ray's back there. At some point, sometime soon, it would be good to get a presentation, if that's going to be part of this conversation and trying to understand our budgeting. I think I want to understand where we're at with some of those updates.
Absolutely. Again, just having heard it from at least two board members, member Singh and member Pritchett, I will task our team to come back with, here's what we're thinking, and here's what we think we might need for you to consider, for you to deliberate. Sure, Ray is happy to hear that, and that's the purpose of this discussion. Okay, all right, then everybody. Yes, but as it relates to this discussion, we can do a very, you know, quick update on safety, but also, as it relates to budget development, also, you know, some information about, this is something we might want to, or we would like you to consider as a board as you deliberate for adoption of fiscal year '23-'24, and you can decide whether to adopt or not, based on your review of all of the other investments and continued discussions, as you said, member Singh, so that eventually you feel comfortable with what you would be allocating as an investment, once you know the impact over the course of several years.
Thank you, member Singh. Okay, for me, I think that, once again, this is a beautiful, aspirational document, and thank you guys for sharing. Things that stuck out, stuck out to me, things that I really enjoyed here, love the dual-emergent expansion work that we're talking about, expanding substitute staffing, love that. Increased support for emergent bilingual students, necessary. And increased school site discretionary funds, I hear all the time around, it's like the schools and the principals and their need for those funding amounts. So those are things that I'm very in favor of, along with a lot of things that my colleagues said. One of the things that I want to echo, as I wrote here, is the idea of safety. We've been hearing about it. We've been having conversations about it. And it's something that's top priority for our communities, our school sites, our principal, teachers, staff. And so in any way that we can enhance and advance the work that Ray's team is doing, I think it's important that we do so expeditiously. Also, I also agree with the LCAP, and making sure that we connect these things to our LCAP goals. I think that, you know, brings continuity of the work we're doing. Arts in elementary schools, I had wrote that down, so I'm glad you spoke towards that. It's going to be very important that we have that fluidity that goes from our kindergarteners all the way to high school, because we also know that we arts, we have arts desert in a lot of our areas, to where arts in VAPA is not seen equally throughout our district, right? So, you know, if you go to school in some areas, you have a great arts education that connects to your regular academic program, and that uplifts you as a student and individual. You go to school other places, and you don't have those opportunities. And that actually is inequity that we are continuing to foster. Also, the care team in their department, the work that they do is done through grants. And we really want to see, what does that look like of having the care team more ingrained in what we do as a district? We talk about our absenteeism and truancy. So those are things, and actually, sports in elementary schools are also big, too. So I mean, all of these things, you know, like, we can rattle off, unless all these things are huge. But those are some of the things that, you know, as we have these conversations, we talk about the care team, we talk about safety, and we talk about arts and culture. I think that those are some things that I would love to see brought back. And then also, I know we're talking about this here in the spaces, but I would love to have these same conversations in community, have these same conversations with school site parents, teacher staff. I think that getting buy-in from our community members, the people that we service here, is highly important. And sometimes we miss that portion. We have conversations with the board. We have conversations with the board, we might have conversations with our labor partners as well. But we oftentimes miss just your everyday sacrament in parent that is, that's picking their kids up and taking them back and getting their input around how this impacts them and what they would like to see in their students' educational outcomes and experiences. And so I want us to be cognizant of that work as well, because that type of work is some of the most important work, and I feel that we've fallen short often on that. So that's my two cents. And yeah.
Yep. Member Rhodes, just on that, on that last comment, again, because we've not had this experience often, I will ask Chief Heath to put together a simple of a message to our families, just reminding them or letting them know that this evening we did present this information to the board. We'll include the slides as well. And then we would be very interested in working with our board members as you continue to deliberate these discussions, but prior to budget adoption, how we might communicate through other avenues, forums, or however you as a board deem, deem appropriate. But I'll ask Chief Heath to just put together a message that maybe we can send tomorrow to our families or Friday that just kind of summarizes what we presented to the board and what we're coming back with further information and relevance from the board.
Great, yeah. And, and the, the communication at minimum, real request is that we're out in the community talking to our, our community members around what's going on, which you also spoke about as well. And so that, and we have the appropriate staff there also to fill questions, ask along with the board members that this is some really important work and it's on, it's on us to make sure that we do that work as well. So, um, we have, oh, member Phillips hopped in the queue. We're going to pitch it to member Phillips.
This is probably so off topic, so I'm just trying to wake everyone up, but have, and I think this is for Erin. Have we ever considered different methods of language delivery for, say in this case, like black students who use African American vernacular English? And looking, looking into ways like if, I mean, if we're looking at our, you know, our dreams and things that we really want to be able to reach our students so that they can learn, is there anything that we're considering with regard to code switching in education?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I'm just trying to think about the, the best way to get at this through the investments that we have here. So I will say, starting with, and I think it's on slide, I'm not going to remember, early on in the high quality instructional piece around structured literacy. So I know this is not exactly what you're talking about right now, but I do want to start with that. Because, you know, when we're talking about, when in our, in our CNI team, curriculum instruction team, when we're talking about, it's actually back, back up a little bit more. One more, please, one more. So structured literacy staffing and implementation. And so one of the things that we know that is a huge lever in terms of interrupting inequities is to make sure that all kids are reading by third grade, right? And so that's why we have implement, that's why we're making this proposal is because in, in our district, we have not for quite some time invested in really specific systematic foundational early literacy instruction. And so this piece right here, while not about code switching, it is about really ensuring that our children are able to read, right? And not just to be able to sound things out, but read to be able to learn. And so that they, and, and the, the idea behind this particular investment is that we are teaching our teachers, our instructional aides, our administrators, the, the science of reading and how it requires all the different parts of your brain to learn together. I should actually invite Shannon Pella up here to help. Thank you. I, I'm standing here talking about this when we have someone in the room who is an expert in this, as I ramble. So Shannon is our, is our director for professional learning for literacy, ELA humanities. And so I will hand it over to her to talk about how this idea of structured literacy can, and, and how we teach students through about code switching and all of that. I'll let you take.
And, and to be honest, you don't have to run through too much.
No, no, I will be, I will be succinct. I was just, I was so excited when you asked that question, member Phillips. I was back there going, I want to answer it. Because as Erin said, as we're teaching foundational early, early literacy skills to kids, all of the research suggests exactly what you're saying, that heritage languages, home languages, dialectical language, vernacular is all part of learning. Any language, whether it's a new second or third language, or whether it's the standard academic English of the language that one might speak with, with a dialectical or vernacular English. So, excuse me, because I ran up here. So part of the, part of the instructional repertoire then, and part of the approach is to not just value and engage and respect kids' use of heritage and vernacular language, which is, is critical and foundational, but, but actually to tap into those assets and build upon them and use them and bring them into the learning of foundational reading skills. So I, I, you know, I promised I would be succinct, but I think that I, I see threads of what you're asking in exactly what is on this slide between culturally relevant library books and reading and teaching kids foundational skills. And then on the other slide with anti bias, anti racist teaching. And I will, I will stop now, but thank you for asking that.
Yeah, I'd love to see at any time, if you guys can like come up with something to share with the board. Obviously don't feel pressured to do that immediately, but I would love to, to hear about something that we could do with regard to that. Thanks.
Thank you, member Phillips. Uh, and really one quick question again. The dual language immersion expansion, probably you guys haven't thought of this, you might have thought of this as well, but this expansion programs, we were talking about Mong, we're talking about Spanish, we're talking about Chinese, Mandarin. Where would these, where would it be housed and located? Where would these middle school programs be housed and located for a community?
Thank you for asking the question, member Rhodes. We've not done that analysis because it will, it would be based on master scheduling issues, where we have facilities, where we might be able to make those programs available. We do have some history at our high school level of offering Mandarin courses at certain court, at certain class, at certain schools. So we know that we have the teachers. We would probably want to create pathways that make sense. But I, I, I know that there will be a lot of interest from our community if the board were to adopt that investment in terms of where they would like to see some of these programs based out of. But ultimately, we would want to make sure that we feel that we have the capacity and we capitalize on where some of the programs already are in place, as you mentioned earlier. And thank you for remembering that. We do have some of these programs at our high school level, but we don't have them at the middle school level. So we'd want to make sure that we select sites that make the most sense.
Okay. Well, I look forward to more discussions with my colleagues and community members around this. Thank you guys so much for your time. Looks like we're going to end this about six minutes before time. So thank you guys for your time and we're going to go to the next item. Thank you. Item nine point eight. Okay, so item nine point eight is something that was brought through the board. We're going to, I'm going to be appointing three of our, my colleagues here to the legislative ad hoc committee that's going to meet monthly. And so the people that I will be appointing, proposing to appoint today are member Tara Jean, member Savannah Phillips, and member Christina Pritchett to the legislative ad hoc committee. Do we have any public comment around the topic?
We do not.
Okay. Board comment, member Kayata.
So in terms of who you're putting on there, I'll let other people speak if they have other opinions. I have no opinion on that. I know member Jean has expressed a lot of interest in this from the DIA, so I appreciate her inclusion at the very least. I would like to suggest that the scope of this committee be slightly augmented to also include any policy based resolutions. And I'm not going to strictly define that because I think for a resolution, if it deals with public policy, you kind of know it when you see it. Something like a celebration of a month, a day, that's not, I mean, it's policy, but it's not creating, you know, dramatic new policy. But something like, you know, I would hope that we would consider, you know, a resolution to support a pride week, for example. That would be something that I would like to see go through the committee. So in the same sense that we'd work with our legislative liaisons on what bills to support and what our positions would be, if we're having kind of BP policies based resolutions, that we would have that committee be a place for that to be worked through.
The, the intent of the legislative ad hoc committee is any legislation that the board would be looking at to approve or be brought forward in any type of way would go through that committee. So I think that answers your question.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
So the, yes, that's the intent of the committee. What you said is the intent of the committee, any legislation that comes forward to the board that will do any of approval would go through the legislation ad hoc committee.
So I'm saying that we would also have resolutions in some cases go through it.
If the resolution has any legislation or anything like that going through it, then yes, it would.
Okay, well, I, I'm saying more than that then, I guess. It wouldn't have to necessarily include legislation under what I'm recommending.
So explain your further recommendation.
So if we are going to consider a resolution as a board, that's making policy changes basically for our district, that they would also go to this committee. And the reason I'm suggesting that is I believe that will allow us to have three board members rather than one, work with staff or work with the community to make sure that, you know, when we bring it to the full board, we don't have to unnecessarily delve into it in a way that will diminish resolutions that should be celebratory. And also to reflect the fact that one board member might not always have the full context and three is a lot more likely to do so. And this wouldn't be every resolution, but it'd be ones of the type that I described. And of course, ones that include legislation.
You're, you are talking about policy and legislation. Yeah? Am I hearing you right?
I guess you could say I am proposing that the committee be a policy and a legislation committee.
Specifically around resolutions.
Resolutions or when we're going to bring forth a letter of support or opposition to legislation. So your committee plus.
Policy and legislation committee. I got it. Thank you. I think I got it. Yeah. Member Singh.
I just want to echo some of the concerns that Taylor's brought up and kind of want to support the idea of a slight amendment as, as he's stating. Part of that is I love the celebrations that we do. I also know that they've been packed in and I also want to figure out a way to celebrate folks and also find a way for us to move things through a process and through a committee for us to trust one another. And I think this takes a step towards building trust and having a subcommittee work on these things and have more eyes on it. So I just want to support the idea that Taylor has put forth, but do appreciate you with your selections as you have selected them.
Okay, policy and legislation committee built on trust. I think I got it. So, member Phillips.
Yeah, I, I look forward to participating on this committee. I, I look forward to being able to provide context to a great many things. I, I just, I want to make sure that I'm able to participate fully in this, this particular committee. This is not any finger pointing or whatnot, but you've got, and I'm the only black woman on the board, so obviously I'm always going to be the only black woman on anything that occurs, you know, in terms of committee selection. But I, I, I want to say to my fellow board members that I am going to be sharing this space with, that we've, you know, had many agreements in the past, that we come to these with an open mind. So frequently as we work together, there will be conflict, there will be conversations regarding tone deafness and racism and, you know, there's a whole list of things that I bring to it because I'm bringing the culture aspect to these types of, of, of communications that we're going to have with one another. So I'm, I'm just putting it out into the ether right now because I know we can do good things and I know that we can work together. I just want to make sure that, that we're, we're comfortable with the challenges. And I'm saying it actually, not to you specifically, but to you and member Jean, is that, you know, please be comfortable with the call out. So there, there will be opportunities where we can have discussions about certain things. When we're talking about legislature, I'm going to want to ask, hey, why are people missing when we're, you know what I mean? If we're doing a resolution, why are we forgetting about this? So, and I know everyone's heart is in what they do. I just want to be able to feel like my position and my participation in this committee is a safe space. I just want to make sure that's clear and that that's out in the air so that when we work together, that we can work through conflicts that we may have, so that we can do what's best for our students, for the district. Love you, love your show.
Thank you, guys. So this is a policy and legislative ad hoc committee. Not a resolution committee, but it is a policy and legislative ad hoc committee. With the names, we're going to, it's an action item, so we will, I will motion, do we have a second for the names?
So are, are you moving it as I suggested that it be modified?
I'm moving it as a policy and legislation ad hoc committee based on trust.
I'm happy to second that.
And so, um, we have a second, do we have a student preferential?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Member Phillips.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure that this is clear and I'm, I'm making this statement because the feeling I have of not being safe just occurred. I said something, it made people maybe feel uncomfortable. We as a board need to be talking about the things that make us feel uncomfortable. And I say something and we immediately just start moving back into what, what we were doing. No one addressed what I said. No one talked about what I meant in not feeling safe participating in committees like this. It's more important to me to put in the work and, and put forth the effort, but if I don't feel like I'm heard, I don't want to participate. That is a serious concern that I have. And frequently when we have board meetings and I say something that is uncomfortable, the tone police turn on and everything that I've said gets thrown under the carpet. And I need that to stop because that's actually stifling my ability to grow as a board member and to participate here. And, and I promised myself I was going to try not to call out microaggressions too much, but I feel like I have to because I think as a board, we need to get on board with this. So if I say something and even in your head, if you're thinking about something, give everyone an opportunity to say, you know what? That's something I think that I need to mention, right? Gracie, I'm willing to work with you. This may be a challenging time. Most of the time, people have things to say when other folks are talking, but when I open my mouth, people do not respond to me and it's driving me nuts. So I'm putting that on the record today. So I'm putting that on the record today. I'm still cool with this committee, but if we come and we talk about something and I get whitewashed or I get tone policed or I get microaggressed against, I'm going to say something. And I need that to be clear because I'm still feeling uncomfortable. It's two years and I'm really tired. And I need to see that happen. I need to feel comfortable that the people I'm going to work with on this committee are going to be open to that. So I am not necessarily asking for an expression at this moment, but I may need a phone call or an email to let me know that you're willing to commit to working with me. If not, and, you know, white supremacy reigns supreme, get me off this committee.
Member Singh.
I'm not on the committee, but I do want to acknowledge, at least publicly, that I hear you, Gracie. And I'm just hoping that we are able to do some good things on this committee. And if those are the issues that you're facing, that we should be able to discuss them and figure out how to get past them. But I think it's really important to have the perspectives that this committee is supposed to have. And I value your perspective and I value your opinions, and I just hope that that we think about what Gracie just said and we try to figure out a way to acknowledge one another and work together. So, that's it.
Thank you, Member Singh. Superintendent. We had preferential. You already did.
Okay, sorry. Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Let's do it.
Member Pritchett. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Okay, Committee passes with all members who are present. Okay, going on to 9.9. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rhodes, Board members. I am bringing to you, really because we don't have staff designated for this, I'm bringing to you this item, a Contract for Professional Services for District Governance. This is an item 9.9, and I'll ask that we move forward with the next slide. Of course, you're all used to our core value statement and our guiding principle, and you see it at every Board presentation. The item that we are bringing for your consideration this evening is a contract with the Council of the Great City Schools for professional services related to district governance. The contract was made available to you in the backup documentation for tonight's Board Agenda Item. It is a contract that has a length of up to 24 months. It is a two-year term with a cost of either $60,000 or $40,000 if the Board approves the contract unanimously, so long as there is a Board implementation timeline that is met. In the backup documentation, we should have included a sample or a template of what a Board implementation timeline looks like. It really is just a series of commitments that the Board agrees to as part of your governance training to actualize and implement as a Board Governance Structure. If that, and I did want to just mention that typically, as I understand, a Board implementation timeline is developed, of course, by the Board and the Governance Facilitation Team within three weeks after the Governance Orientation, which would be scheduled at the Board's convenience and will. If that Board implementation timeline is not met over the course of the contract, the maximum cost for the contract goes up to $100,000 per year with a unanimous vote or $150,000 a year without a unanimous vote. The cost for the contract itself is exclusive of travel expenses, which are not to exceed $2,500 per facilitator per trip. And I did want to just mention that the items that would contribute to a maximum contract cost, and again, this is if the Board implementation timeline is not met. The additional items that would contribute to a contract that would cost more than $60,000 or $40,000 if it is approved unanimously is additional in-person training, additional coaching support for governance body. In other words, the Council of the Great City Schools would be recording the requests that we are making and would essentially waive all of those fees if the Board meets this Board implementation timeline. If the determination is made that the Board did not meet, did not actualize, you know, with fidelity, if you will, the actions that are laid out in the Board implementation timeline, then those costs would be added, again, to a maximum contract amount of $100,000 per year with a unanimous vote or $150,000 without a unanimous vote. And the contract does spell out a 30-day clause to terminate such agreement. The reason why we are bringing it to the Board in open session is because there is the potential for a cost that exceeds what I'm authorized to sign as Superintendent. Of course, our goal, and I as a member of the Governance Team, is hopefully to pay no more than $40,000 for the length of this contract. Or with a vote that is not unanimous, a maximum of up to $60,000. But I did not want to make the either assumption and sign it knowing that it could be more than what I'm authorized to sign. So with that, President Rhodes, those are the details that I wanted to present to the Board. And I won't spend time talking about, of course, the value of governance, only to say that we do have new Board members, and we do think that this would be a great opportunity for this new Board to coalesce and determine what you're looking for in terms of the items of a Board implementation timeline based on the template that was provided to you in the backup documentation.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay, Board Comment, we have Member Kayata.
So there was a comment earlier today about this Board not functioning well. And I think if you see the fact that we are bringing this contract forward, we recognize that. We are not blind to the fact that we have not focused enough on student outcomes. The group that we are proposing to work with should we approve this contract is unapologetically focused on student outcomes. And that is why, when I vote yes on this tonight, my intent is to stop these adult conversations and to move into at least 50% of our time, hopefully more, will we spend on student outcomes, student success, things that help our kids go out and live a great life after they come out of our schools. This contract is essentially $40,000 to $400,000, and then some. We are holding ourselves truly accountable in doing this. This is not a small thing. This is not a standard contract, as I spoke with Ann about. But that speaks to the fact that we're not just saying we're going to do this. We're acknowledging that if we don't do it, we're going to pay. And we will have to answer to our constituents if we incur those costs.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Member Singh.
It's definitely a unique contract. Can't imagine getting away with writing something like this as myself. But I will say that I agree with what Member Kayata is saying, which is there is definitely a level of holding ourselves accountable. But then I think I'm just going to take the opportunity to say that we have to challenge ourselves to actually implement the ideas that are going to be provided from the great schools. And something I had read earlier is that we have had great schools, the Council of Great City Schools, come out years before, in 2017, around special education and provided a list, a laundry list, I'd say, of recommendations. And if we look at where we're at today, I don't know if we've actually implemented those completely. And then that is my challenge, that if we're going to hire someone, then we actually have to adhere to the ideas that they're putting forth. Otherwise, I don't want to get a list of recommendations and a 100-page report, and then we don't actually implement those ideas. We hear that, we heard that last week when we had our Black African-American Advisory Committee here. We have people who have given us, this is what we're hoping that you will accomplish. These are the things that we think you need to improve on. And then if we don't do it, that's the additional thing the community is going to hold us to. Member Kayata, it's not just going to be, you spent $400,000. It's like, they said, this is what you need to do. And then if we sit up here and deliberate about what we actually need to get done, then it totally takes away from the point of bringing these experts in. So I just want to put that out there and make sure that we need to challenge ourselves. Otherwise, you know, I wouldn't agree to something like this if we're not going to agree to put in the work.
Thank you, Member Singh. Member Phillips.
And to be clear, the work that we are doing is, we will not receive a prescription as to how to improve. We are the ones who are building what it is we want in terms of success for our students at this district. Therefore, if these are our ideas, we should be fully committed to making sure that we get these done as soon as we possibly can, or there will be consequences. So if we can work together and make sure that we are able to, in our individual areas and as one big huge area of Sacramento City Unified School District, we can do this. I know we can. We just have to put our egos aside and make sure that we understand that this is not them telling us what to do. This is us coming together with our ideas, our hopes and dreams for our students, and making sure that we have a plan of action to get them to succeed. This will not be a comfortable process for us. It will be a difficult process, but we are here for a reason. And I really, really am hopeful because, I mean, we've worked together, you know, at least a total of six months or so. But at this point, the person that we are using to facilitate our gatherings, as Member Kayata said, is unapologetic. So, you know, this is just, it's an exercise in humility, along with trying to make sure that our children, you know, have a future.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Seeing that we have no one else in the queue.
No, I would like to move. Did we move to do this?
I thought we did, but no. Member Phillips, you'd like to move it?
Yes, I would.
Do we have a second? A second from Member Pritchett. And student preferential? Okay. Oh, no, it's okay. Superintendent?
Yes. Member Kayata.
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yes.
Member Pritchett? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Aye, the motion unanimously passes. Okay. Now going to item 10.0. Board Workshops for Cheesy Plan and Other Initiatives, 10.1. Hello.
Is this, how do I do this? Okay. Hi.
You're good to go.
All right. Hello, hello, Board members, hello, my colleagues who are still here in the back. I'm really excited that it's only 10 o'clock and not 11 o'clock. So, awesome. My name is Amanda Goldman. I am in my two-month anniversary here in Sac City Unified as the Director of Innovative Schools. And that means that I am over charter oversight, so probably y'all are going to see a little bit of me. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about Board policies that keep us up to date with what's going on in the legislature and in the law. Next slide, please. So a few things, and I'm going to be very brief. I'm definitely going to make it under 10 minutes. But what I really want to focus on tonight is building towards a shared understanding. There's a lot of complexity in charter law. Everyone here is very, very intelligent, and these laws have changed multiple times in the last five years. So we're all kind of catching up. So I hope that this is a foundation to build some understanding, build some shared knowledge, and also just lay a foundation for future questions and future conversations. Next slide, please. So we see this slide at the start of all of our Board presentations, and it's really powerful. But as this is the first time you all get to meet me, I wanted to use it as a little intro to myself, just very briefly. So I am about 21 years so far in public education. Yes, I actually did have my first classroom when I was 16, but I'm not counting that. And I haven't been part of a big district. And we can talk offline about why that is and why I made those choices. But I did make the choice two months ago to come here because I really believe in that core belief up there about systems are inequitable by design. And 21-plus years in education has taught me that we fix that by redesigning those systems, by streamlining them to make sure we have more time to focus on kids and learning. So while I'm here to talk about Board policies that seem very far away from kids and learning, I hope that you all see that my focus is, let's make it so this isn't a thing that we have to fight about, argue about, so that we can really focus on kids and learning. That's my goal. Next slide, please. All right, so just some shared terms. There are pretty much no acronyms in this presentation. And, but, but there is a lot of confusion in this world of charter law, and so I wanted to just get some clear terms out here. So the one that I want us to focus on is an authorizer. You all, the Sac City Unified School Board, you are an authorizer. And what that means is that charter schools are authorized by you all or by the County Office of Ed, once in a while by the state, but that's actually becoming very, very uncommon and will be phased out, to allow a charter school to operate with some degree of independence from the district. The task of authorizers, and you all have charged me with this task, is to oversee that the charters are doing what they're supposed to do. They're following the law, they're achieving the outcomes we want them to see. Within Sac City, we have 16 charter schools. That's a, that's a solid number. I mean, it's not the biggest, but it's definitely not the smallest. And we classify them in two ways. We talk about our dependent schools and our independent schools. And if you want to really dig into that, you can check out the graphic that I've created for you, or we could have a much, much longer conversation. But the short version is our dependent schools have a much closer relationship with us, the authorizer, than our independent schools. For all practical purposes, our dependent schools function as schools of the district. And we've seen them, we've seen some of them up here. Our independent schools, as the name implies, are more independent. Next slide, please. All right, so the big piece of legislation that we need to all be familiar with is Assembly Bill AB 1505. It was signed into law in 2019, and you probably heard about it. It was all set to get implemented, and then we all know what happened in 2020. So just to be clear, this is not new legislation, but because of COVID, we aren't really up to date with it. So AB 1505 focused on updating charter legislation that hadn't really been changed since the initial Charter Schools Act of 1993. So it was a long time coming. And it focused on three really big pieces. The importance of local control, clarity and transparency, and then accountability and use of data. And I have heard all of you talk about all of those things a lot, and they're a big part of this legislation. As you can imagine, AB 1505 was not a mutually loved piece of legislation, and there was a lot of compromise that went into it. But at the end of it, it really came out with compromises for all groups on all sides of the table. And from an authorizer perspective, much stronger oversight and local control of charter schools. And then from the charter school side, clear procedural and appeal rights to maintain some of their independence. Next slide, please. So really big key changes under AB 1505. And in that little dotted box, there's some other changes if you're curious about, but I'm not going to spend time at 10 o'clock talking about those. I want to talk about the renewal criteria and timeline. So what AB 1505 did is it made it very, very clear what we as an authorizer can look at when we're looking at charter renewal. And speaking of student outcomes, it tied those criteria very, very, like, one point to the other on the student outcomes as rep- one point to the other on the student outcomes as reported on the student dashboard. And at some point, we will go into much deeper conversation about what that means. But, but what it really means is there's, we look at two years of data as reported on the student, on the school dashboard. And that really drives what we can do as an authorizer. The good side of that is if schools aren't doing what we expect them to do, we have some pretty clear action steps. And if schools are doing great things for our kids, we have some pretty clear action steps. The other two things that we can consider under AB 1505 are fiscal or governance concerns, and then concerns about is a school serving all the students who wish to attend. Again, all of those are more complicated, but for now, that's kind of the big picture. On the other side of it, AB 1505 really emphasized timeline and appeal rights. And, and so what that means for us as a, as an authorizer and for you all as a board is that we have timelines that we have to stick to. Because if we don't stick to them, our charters can appeal above our heads to a different authorizer. So first the county and then the state board. So if we really focus on that idea of local control, this law basically says you get to maintain local control by following the law. And if you don't, we're going to, we're going to let you appeal to someone else. And so I, I say that because I think sometimes we sort of like wonder, well, what happens if? And, and so they're very clear in this law, what happens if? Next slide, please. So obviously, I've only been here two months. I did not do all this work in two months. I'm pretty awesome, but I'm not quite that awesome. The development of these board policies that are compliant with the new law started with my predecessor, Jesse Ramos. And he started with draft policies from the California School Board Association. They're very standard. There was engagement with stakeholders, including legal counsel, including charter school leaders, including SAC City Unified District staff. I sort of picked up the work there. And the last piece that I really wanted to make sure was like, does this look like what other districts and other county offices are doing? And so I can say that having looked at Oakland Unified, San Juan Unified, Elk Grove, Alameda County Office of Ed, Contra Costa Office of Ed, they're all doing pretty much exactly what you see in these policies. Last slide, please. So I wanted to keep it brief. I knew it was going to be late. But I just wanted to again remind you all that my goal is to start a dialogue here and have conversations, and hopefully we can have more conversations in the future. Thank you, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, board discussion. Hop in the queue, Member Pritchett.
I just want to say welcome to SAC City and thank you.
Thanks so much. Member Singh?
So I would love to do a deeper dive, but not right now. So I just want to put it out there. I would love to learn more, especially around, I'm just really into policy and I really enjoy this stuff. And I'm happy to look into, was it AB 1505 you said? To dive deeper. But just trying to understand at a deeper level the changes that that policy has had and kind of pick your brain at some point to figure out how that's supposed to work and benefit our children, benefit the public school system. I need to, I want to get to know a little bit more about that. So if we can do that, Superintendent, that would be good.
I, I am here for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Singh. Seeing that we don't have any other members in the queue, thank you for the first reading, and we'll be seeing you soon.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we're going to go, so also, we'll actually, student member asked to have their portion during our communications part. And so we're going before Superintendent, we'll go with student member. Yeah, sounds good. All right. So, no, no problem. So my, my mistake, I misunderstood. But what we're going to do moving forward is we're just going to have our student board members share with all other board members at their request. Because they are board members like the rest of us, and they would like to share during that part. I will note that I think that the board suggested moving it up just due towards timing and making sure we don't, if our student board member has to leave, they can leave, but at your request. Yeah. We'll, we'll put you back just in with the other board comments. So Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Rhodes. I'll be very brief. I just want to join the board in all of the honoring that you did of staff at all levels today during our board meeting. These are all, as you know, individuals that we rely on every day to support our students across the entire district in SAC City Unified. You also heard Director Flores, and I just want to acknowledge more formally that this week is also School Lunch Hero Week. And I ask that you join us in celebrating them, our nutrition services. Staff worked diligently. Member Kayada, Member Villa were there this afternoon for a brief lunch, honoring some of our staff through a very unique partnership with students from Los Rios Community College, where they have access to the amazing facility and equipment at the Central Kitchen. But just want to really honor our staff who provide healthy and nutritious meals, as you know, to keep our students' minds on their studies and off hunger. On Wednesday, May 10th, is National School Nurses Day, also Mother's Day. For those of us who celebrate in Mexico, it's always on Mother's Day on, on May 10th. But it also is National School Nurses Day. And I'd like to thank our nurses for making a difference in the lives of students who need their care, especially during this pandemic and even post-pandemic. As a reminder, next week is an important celebration throughout all of May, as you know, where we will celebrate our teachers for National Teacher Appreciation Week. And we want to thank all of our educators and all of our staff who serve our students day in and day out throughout the district and throughout all of our schools. Returning back to nutrition staff for a moment, I'd like to congratulate the Central Kitchen. They were awarded a grant from the California Department of Food and Agriculture to plant organic lettuces at Soilborne Farms for the next three years for our school salad bars. Ms. Flores and her team are working hard to make strides toward localizing our students' food supply. I'm also pleased to share that our Summer Matters program is actively enrolling now. Families have until May 15th to submit their application for our summer programming that includes academic enrichment, field trips, visual and performing arts enrichment. All of our students will be provided with a daily breakfast and lunch as part of the program, and all programs are grant-funded and offered at no cost to families. And finally, I'm sure you will say something about this, President Rhodes. But with summer program enrollment is often a sign that we are drawing closer to the end of the school year. Our final SAC City Community Fair for this school year will be in just two weeks, on Saturday, May 20th, at Rosa Parks. I hope you'll join us for this event that connects our families with school district programs, staff, partners, and many other incredible community resources. Thank you again, President Rhodes.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. You're correct. May 20th, Rosa Parks Elementary School, please come out, join the festivities. It's going to be a community-wide event, and it's always fun on the south side of the city. Also, May 15th, we're going to be doing a garden cleanup at Rosa Parks as well. And so if you have any volunteers who'd love to come and redo the garden, put some new soil down, build planter box for our kindergarteners at that school site, it would be amazing. Also, this week is Rock the Block. Rock the Block is happening in Oak Park. And so they're also always looking for volunteers. I'll keep mine short today, but I look forward to having all of you guys out to the south side and to other community events around our community. Thank you so much, and we'll go into information sharing by board members. We have Member Singh in the queue.
All right. I actually just want to talk about yesterday's event. Yesterday evening, I want to thank members, or President and Vice President for showing up to the safety conversation. So we had a Know Your Rights presentation at Hiram Johnson High School. Yesterday evening, we had folks from the Public Defender's Office, Keith Stanton's office, and then our very own Ray Lozado, who's also there to answer any questions. And we had about probably 40, 40 to 50 folks show up. And I think the biggest takeaway that folks told me is, we didn't really know about this until last minute. I swear I've been announcing it, but the date was shifting. All that to say that the feedback tells me that we need to do another conversation, and that conversation will happen soon, and it will probably be on the exact same topic. I think the takeaways that folks had last night was that we are trying to create a safer environment for our children. And I absolutely believe that safety is created through conversation, through discussion, through understanding, and, and getting to know one another and respecting one another. But sometimes, even if you do all those things, they may not lead to a positive interaction, unfortunately, with our law enforcement officers. So what I'm trying to engage and push our community to understand is that to have these tough conversations, you have to acknowledge that these issues exist. Let's acknowledge that this is a difficult conversation. Let's acknowledge the historical undertones that exist here, the historical proof in fact that our communities, especially communities of color, have not had the same experiences with law enforcement as other communities have. And it's important to be allies and support each other in this space. So I'm just requesting folks that we will get that information out. But we hope that you will show the same love and support as you did last night. And we hope to have a full house the next time we have this conversation. And I encourage board members to show up because I think it's been said before, but when you show up, it showcases that you care, and it showcases that you understand. And I'm hoping that at the next event, we can see more board participation. Thank you.
Member Pritchett?
Thank you, President Rhodes. I opened this meeting with expressing the tragedy that happened at Rosemont High School this morning. And we had an additional event that had taken place at Rosemont High School where it makes me pause and think, what more can we do? I want to speak directly to my community members tonight. I spoke to many of you on the phone, on messages, all throughout the day. And I thank you tremendously for reaching out to me. I hear you. I'm listening. I see you. It's heartbreaking that it has come to this, and it makes me think, it could have been so much worse. It could have been so much worse. So I have, I want to thank the Superintendent for hearing me out today and Mr. Lozado in the back. And I have asked that we have an assembly for Rosemont students to talk about the trauma that they've experienced today. And it also involves the use of drugs and the effects of them. And also that we have additional emergency drills. I heard a lot about what happened during the drills that is not sufficient. And I really want to thank Member Singh for mentioning about the safety presentation. Yes, absolutely. We need to be having continuous safety presentations by Mr. Lozado. It's, it needs to be ongoing. And we really need to be challenging ourselves and thinking outside the box of what else can we be doing to keep our kids safe, to keep our staff safe? This is our job as a board. So ironically, it's Mental Health Awareness Month this month. And I also would like to request that we have a presentation to see what else can we be doing that, that would be serving our students.
Thank you, Member Pritchett. Member Phillips?
For the last month or so, I've been attending at Congregation Beni Israel some talks they've been having on institutional racism in our public schools. March 26th, we had a discussion regarding patterns and impacts of segregation. April 30th, which I believe was last week, we had a talk regarding trauma, discipline, and schooling in the U.S. And this coming Sunday, which is May 7th, we're going to be having local responses addressing racist disparities. We have an expert panel, Daryl White, Valerie Williams Crawford, Patrice Hill, Omar Field Ridley, and Bina Lefkovitz from Sacramento County Board of Education. So that is May 7th. The, it is live streamed, so if you want to watch it online or not show up in person, you can also go to the Beni Israel website. And I'm going to center our, our, our Black children for a minute. I did attend the Know Your Rights. It was, it was interesting. It was eye-opening. Next time, we will have more people there. I don't know what we're going to have to do, shout it from the, the building tops. But I, I want to read something. I know it's past 10:30. Okay?
Are we actually on time?
Yeah. So, okay. So, I mean, if you're at home, you can close your eyes and listen to this. And I need you to really appreciate that this is the existence for many of our, our Black children. Wednesday afternoon, the bell rings. You grab your books and bags, and out the school gates you go, free. You're walking down the street, minding your own business. Whoop, whoop. We know what that sound is. Too short blasts. Many of my loved ones know all too well. You keep walking. You take a deep breath. You remain calm. You remember the lesson. You know what to do. Because the overseer officer is trained to activate before they investigate, Black adults and children unfortunately need to not only be prepared to know their fourth, fifth, and sixth amendment rights when encountering law enforcement, but also how to invoke them. The overseer officer attempts to call you over. Keep walking. Your business is not theirs until they force the issue. Do not run. The overseer officer attempts to call you over. I just read that a second time. They, it says your business is not theirs until they force the issue. Please expect them to force the issue. That is their training. What you say and do in the next few minutes could be the difference between life and death, loved one. So I want you to commit these five words and three amendments to memory and never forget them. Am I free to go? That is your fourth amendment right. Stay silent. That is your fifth amendment right. I want to talk to an attorney or lawyer. That is your sixth amendment right. If they press you, loved one, the first thing you should say to them as you continue on your way is a phrase containing these five words, "Am I free to go?" Stay calm. Keep walking. No more, no less. Remember to stay silent. In a perfect world, you're free, as it should be, to protect, to proceed and plan to go to your next activity. However, the world is not perfect, and your body is black. Do not expect to be respected by the overseer officer, loved one. Stay calm. Keep walking. Am I free to go? Keep walking. Stay calm. Stay silent. That's your fifth amendment right. The overseer officer steps to you or blocks your path because they aren't done. Are they ever really done? Stop. Don't fight. Don't explain. Don't argue. Stay calm, loved one. At this point, you must step up your game because your goal, loved one, is to make it to your planned destination alive and well. You're doing good. Keep walking. Remember those five words like a broken record. Am I free to go? No more, no less. Stay silent. A simple question warrants a simple answer, right? I'm sorry you have to go through this, loved one. Hang in there. You got this. The overseer officer may feel compelled to ask you what you're up to, where you're going, what you got on you, et cetera. You have a right to stay silent. You have a right to not answer their questions. No more, no less. If you receive a yes, get If you receive a yes, get to step in, loved one, and get to a place of safety. If you receive a no, you are being detained. Doesn't matter if you're standing on the sidewalk, sitting on a curb, in handcuffs, or in the back of a patrol car. Stay calm, loved one. You got this. To support your safety and reach your intended destination, you say this next set of words. I want to talk to an attorney or a lawyer. Then keep your mouth closed. The law determines preliminary investigation will cease at this point, and legal channels will be opened immediately. If you cannot afford an attorney, don't worry, one will be provided to you at no cost. Whether you're sitting in a jail cell, at county lockup, or in a juvenile detention, you are alive. Remain silent until you receive counsel from an attorney. You made it. I'm glad you're alive, loved one, and I'm sorry you had to go through this. I won't say you won't feel some kind of way about this encounter. All I ask is that you channel those frustrations and concerns into filing a formal complaint if you feel your treatment was unnecessary. If you need help, contact a community organization for help. This will most likely not be the last time you encounter this, and your complaint can help the next person who encounters an overseer officer who oversteps the boundaries of their job to protect and serve. To all my loved ones, in America, we all have a fundamental right to be free of unlawful search and seizure by the government, a right to remain silent, and a right to an attorney or lawyer, regardless of nationality, immigration status, or citizenship. We also have the right to exercise these rights. These rights apply to each and every human being under the Constitution of the United States. This information regarding our rights dates back to 1772, and if you feel so compelled to do so, you can do some research on the rights of the colonists and a list of infringements and violations at your leisure. This is how I felt when I left the Know Your Rights Assembly, and I wish other parents, other students, other neighborhood members, but especially our law enforcement, understand the level of fear that we encounter, seeing the lights, hearing the bark of the siren. There is so much trauma related to encounters with law enforcement that we no longer feel safe. And it's important for us to understand that these are our rights. So, I did make a suggestion to every parent, and maybe we can work with communications. These simple words need to be on stickers, and they need to be on your baby's mirrors in the bathrooms, and they need to be able to see that, so that if they encounter, they know exactly what it is they are supposed to do. Practice makes perfect.
Thank you, member Phillips. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, item 12.0. Do we have a motion to move, so move second? Superintendent.
Member Coyada.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Consent agenda. We are approving consent agenda.
Aye.
Member Pritchett. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Student preferential.
Aye.
Sorry about that. Item 13.0, business financial reports, received information, did so. Future board meetings, May 18th and June 8th. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So, second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a great night, guys.